All right, I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of King George County. Dr. Young, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recommend that the board move action items 11-04, 11-05, 11-06, 11-07, and the county administrative report, which is 11-09, ahead of the public hearings noted in 11-03.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
I note that I have a closed session script here before me dated today. However, I don't see... Oh, wait. Yep, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure. My apologies. My mistake.
It's all good. So we have a motion, properly second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. The agenda has been amended. Next up is public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, so if anybody is here for the three public hearing items, please do not come up at this time. There will be public comment during each of those public hearings. We ask that you offer those comments at the time of that public hearing. So if there is anyone that would like to speak on any other matter that is not the three public hearing items, please come up at this time to the podium.
I'm Kim Dodge, 6150 McCarthy Drive. I have three things, and first of all, we'll start off with budget 2021. I'm asking not to increase our property tax. Don't know if that's in the plans. But some of us, I had to close my small business here in King George, and some of us aren't employed, and a lot of us do not work for the Navy base, and we can work at home and we still get a paycheck, or we're not a public school teacher. So there are a lot of people struggling financially, and we can't get jobs to replace what happened to us. So I'm hoping that property taxes are not going to be increased next year. Can you hear me? The next thing is the solar farm. I did not like the solar farm being put behind my neighborhood in Hopyard off of Port Conway. I supported the farmers behind there. Some of those farms were generational farms. Had been in their, that land had been in their family for, you know, centuries. And then there was a lot of retiree people that had retired back there because they wanted the country. When you put up a solar farm, it ruins the view back there. Solar farms do not create jobs. Once they're built, you just have somebody come in there and maintain them. They're all computerized. Solar farms, you cannot store the electricity like coal and gas, and you cannot sell it on the grid. Recently in Hopyard, we were asked now to make a decision. I was against the solar farms being put back there, being approved. And now we were being asked that, are we gonna get our electricity from the solar farm? My vote is no because they're heavily taxpayer subsidized. I'm fine with coal plants and gas-fired plants, and they can sell it on the grid and store it. They cannot, solar farms can't sell this on the grid and store it. And I don't support things that are heavily taxpayer subsidized. The last one is food court, I mean, food trucks. We didn't know we were, you know, it was wrong to have food trucks come with this COVID-19. My question is, what can we do so we can have food trucks come to our developments? And we are not taking away from the restaurants here. We only have a few restaurants here, and most of us drive to Fredericksburg, or it's just a change, or we don't, we would cook at home. And I also want to know how come, like, Chick-fil-A can come sell food here at the high school at times, and that's all right? And then the school bus has been giving out what they call free food for kids under 18 once a week. My understanding with my neighbors was that's not prepared food, comes from the public schools. But nothing's free, taxpayers pay for it, but we are delivering food from a school bus in our neighborhood too. So I'm really concerned about us not being allowed to have food trucks. We were told, you know, how to live, where we can worship. We had to close everything down. Those were my three things. The increase in property tax next year, the solar farm, I'm against. And that was the second solar farm too. The first one was in the industrial park in King George, and it was behind Hopyard and Port Conway, and allowing food trucks in neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Dodge. Would anybody else like to come to the podium?
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lobal. I live in Presidential Lakes and a long resident of King George. I want to thank you for all the job you're doing, but most of all, I want to thank you to the Sheriff's Department. I know the two previous sheriffs do an outstanding, outstanding job to the people in King George. And for that reason, we should support the police department in King George. And I hear too many times they say they're going to defund the police. No, we will never defund this police because this police help us. When I'm walking in my neighborhood, if a dog bark at me or I scare, I be able to call 911, and they always been there for me. And then I really thank you to all the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else?
Hi, I'm Brandy McCusker. I'm a resident here in King George. I'm here to talk to you guys about a few things. I definitely agree with both of the ladies that just spoke, 100%. Putting solar power here in our county, I didn't see where any of us got a vote on that, which is why I'm here to talk tonight. I think that you guys are making some pretty big decisions without really talking about, or talking to the people that it really matters to, the people of this county. You know, that is a huge deal because you're definitely moving us in a different direction, in a direction that many of us are not okay with, you know? And then to get to the schools, the schools need to be open. I understand that that meeting was last night. But you guys do hold the purse strings. You guys are still funding programs that our kids are not taking advantage of. Why do we have coaches that are still collecting paychecks? Why are the teachers still collecting their full paychecks? Let me tell you, I don't get to sit at home and do my job and still continue to get paid. I'll be darned if that's okay. That's not okay. And we're telling these children that that's all right, that they don't have a social life, that their immune systems are going to suffer significantly because they're sitting at home instead of having the normal playtime and access to people, to touch. There is nothing wrong with any of us. We are not going to die from coronavirus. Y'all are absolutely insane if you are walking around scared to death. That is not living. This is America, land of the home and the free. You understand? Like, we're allowed to breathe God's air. We don't have to muzzle ourselves. That is a control tactic. I am not okay with that. I will never tell my child that they have to mask their face. You're making them feel like little germs. You're making me feel like a germ. I'm not a germ. I'm a human being. I have rights, and they have been violated significantly, significantly. And a whole nother thing, and I don't know if you guys have anything to do with this, but the voting system that we've used, that we've all used, is Dominion, which is well-known for fraud. It was created in Venezuela. It's been used in other countries. It is not good. It's got Smartmatic software in it, which is easy, easily hacked, and votes can literally be changed. I'm not okay with that, not okay with that at all. Who made the decision to put those machines in our state and in our county? Who decided that, hey, we're gonna go ahead and buy some new voting machines and put those in here, and then decide to purchase them through a company that is known for fraud? I want to know that when I voted, that my vote actually went to the candidate that I chose. That's a really big deal, and it's not being talked about, and it needs to be talked about because it's affecting everything.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come up and give a public comment, not on the three hearings? Mr. Dinesh, is there anyone online?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
I know my colleagues have correspondence from the three public hearings, but is there any other correspondence that used to be entered into public comment that is not the three hearings? All right, with that being said, I will close public comment and take reports from members of the board. Mr. Granger, way down there.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Stonehill, you okay with me going first? Okay. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came out and shared their public comment. I appreciate that. Ms. Dodge, I know you've come out here a number of times. Your questions about the taxes, this past year, we did not increase taxes, obviously. That was a concern of ours in order to try to make a budget that would work. I don't think anyone is wanting to increase taxes this year either. I can't make any promises, but I think we all recognize the current climate, and we would endeavor to try to avoid it, or at least I would say I would try to endeavor to avoid it. But I don't want to make you a promise that maybe you can't keep, so that's what kind of is for me at the moment. Solar farms, I know we had a couple of different talking points about solar farms. We did have a public hearing. It was a couple of years ago now, where opportunity for people to come out similar to tonight with like the rezoning request to speak about solar farms. It does change the zoning of that property to become industrial, which does increase the tax collection for the county. So there is an advantage from that perspective, but I do appreciate where you're coming from when you talk about jobs. You are correct, it does not really generate jobs. But after the term is up, then those pieces of equipment will be removed and it will be turned back into farmland. So that is one of the big advantages, I would say, coming out of that. As far as food trucks, again, you know, with our current climate, I can appreciate the situation and why people would like them. And we did talk about it at our CIP meeting, and I think that's something we're going to look at for making amendments to our current ordinances. And right now, our current ordinances are silent upon it, and with Virginia being a Dillon Rule state, what that means is if the rules are silent upon it, then it's not allowed, just the way our state is set up. And so it flows down to the localities. So we do recognize that, and I think we're going to try to find a way to find a middle ground where we can maybe provide a little more leeway to food trucks. But it's not something we can just do at the drop of a hat, so it'll take a little bit of time. Ma'am, I didn't catch your name about the Sheriff's Office. I know you said it. I apologize for missing, but thank you for coming out and sharing your experiences and just speaking about the Sheriff's Office. I think they do a fantastic job as well. It's always nice to hear people speak about them though and have positive things to say. And I think it was Ms. McCusker? Okay, thank you. Solar power, so I spoke a little bit about the solar power. Schools need to be open. I think you recognized that you said that the school board is the one who makes that decision. And as you said, we do control the purse strings, and so we could reduce funding. I mean, that's something we could do. We could pull it back. There is concerns though than with just making sure that as you pull money back, it has an impact as well to the students. I can appreciate your frustration. I am always frustrated by the current situation of three children in the schools. And it's not, I don't think it's the teachers that are at fault or anything along those lines, but I think there are children who are definitely having challenges with the current climate. Due to internet connectivity, just the environment being in front of the screen all the time, there's all kinds of challenges in this. I don't think it's optimal. And I would also like to see us move into more, or into a in-school education as well. But again, as you said, and as is true, the school board has that ultimate decision. Again, about masking, that is at the state level. I know you're frustrated by it, and I can appreciate that as well. But as a locality, we don't have the authority to say to the governor, well, we're not going to, as a locality, have any, we're going to say this is a no-mask zone or something like that. It's just, it's not something we have the authority to make that kind of a determination. Again, with the way our state is set up and our localities. So while I appreciate your anger, and maybe anger is the wrong word, but frustration, and I can agree with that frustration to some degree as well. It's not at our level that we have that authority. Voting machines, I'll be honest, I can't speak to that a whole lot. I do trust our registrar's office. I know Ms. Gump does a fantastic job. She has every confidence of mind that things were run on the up and up, and people's votes counted. I can't speak to any other locality about it, about theirs, because I don't know the people who work in those. But I would always be concerned about people's votes counting, and I think that's always a concern for anyone. No one wants that idea to be true, and if it is true, then that's a travesty. So as I said, I can't really speak to our voting machines. I just don't know, so I apologize for not knowing that information up time ahead. I think I hit all the points. If I missed anything, please feel free to reach out to me though. You're welcome to contact me. You can reach me at my email, and I'll try to, we can, we have an opportunity to set up a time to talk or whatever. So if you want to discuss further, please feel free to reach out to me. Other than that, I'm going to go back to my board report then. I'll try to be brief because I know we have a lot of business on the agenda. On Tuesday, October 27th, we had our CIP work session, it was only one. I'd like to thank the department heads and the staff for the presentations they made for our needs. I'd also like to thank the planning commission for their time to make a recommendation to the board in the first place. Thursday, November 5th, we had an FRA Finance Committee and Board of Directors meeting, and it was just an emergency meeting to adopt the budget with everything going on. They've had as well some challenges with adopting their budget, and so we were finally able to get around to that. Wednesday, November 11th, we had an FRA annual meeting. This was our end-of-the-year meeting. One of the things out of it, we had a panel discussion from a bunch, or a handful of industry individuals who work on finding businesses, locations in different localities. And so they had a couple of good questions, I thought, that were pertinent to really any locality, talking about expansion to existing companies with the current COVID impact, and what's driving decisions, and how can communities position themselves to draw business. And some of the things that came out of that were, they were saying that new relocations are not something that's really occurring right now. The ones that they are seeing are the ones that are finishing up from those that started before COVID. The big things that are driving are fiber availability, which I think we probably all recognize to begin with, and the ability to telework, especially with the current climate. So, you know, as a locality, we have some challenges with those, and we're currently working to resolve them. So I think that's probably for our best interest. And they also said COVID hasn't had a whole lot of impact on the industrial sector. Commercial, yes, but industrial had not been as impacted. Some pieces of industrial, but on the whole, it was doing fairly well, they said. Asked about, there was a question about what kind of data is desired when companies are looking at localities. Again, the big thing was, you know, what kind of services are available, and internet was one of the big ones. Another big one, they said, is employees who might be moving in, schools, schools of information and how they do for students. That's a really important driving choice for companies when they're looking for where they might want to relocate, and if it makes sense for their employees that they would want to go there. Some simple things though was just data available on the internet and a contact information to an actual person, not like an at info address. So, you know, those are some things that came in mind as well. Other than that, on Saturday, November 14th, I attended the King George Light Up the Night, 300th Grand Finale. I'd like to say thank you to staff and to Grabits Entertainment for executing these events. I'd like to thank all those who came out to participate. It was a great event, and with the fireworks, it was quite the fireworks display. For those who got an opportunity to come out and see it, it was pretty impressive. It was a lot of fun. It was nice to be able to get out because obviously with our current climate, that's not something we've had as many opportunities for. So I think it was great for those people who were able to come out, have some fun, and maybe be a little bit more normal of a day. So other than that, just the last two things. I would like to say in particular, thank you to Ms. Gump and the registrar's office for the holding of the election. I know this year's been challenging with the governor's mandate that we provide, or the state's mandate that we provide 45 days of pre-voting, which I think is the most of any state in the country. And I know that puts a lot of burden on the registrar's office, but I know they handled it well and professionally, and so thank you to Ms. Gump and her staff for that. So I'd like to say thank you to Chris Clark and Census Committee for all they've done in order to help make sure the census was done accurately and that we got all of our counts done properly, and so we can have an accurate reflection of who's in the county. I think that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for everybody coming out here this evening. Ms. Dodge, thanks for coming out like usual, and I think Mr. Granger said it pretty well. No one's looking at a property tax hike. We all live here. We would all have to pay it ourselves. So it's definitely something we don't want to do, but, you know, we are looking at some shortfalls this year. So like I said, it's not, it's not a very popular thing, but we're going to do what we can to avoid that. But like Mr. Granger said, we can't promise anything. Solar farms, yes, I hear you. I think that's a long ways off here. I think tonight, we're just going to be looking at some storage facilities for that. I know there are a lot of people down in that area, and the flats were opposed to the idea of solar, but that's a ways off. I think we're just kind of scratching the surface now after the last meeting a couple of years ago that they had. Food trucks, I know in this time, when we're having the flu pandemic and everything, it's, you know, it's convenient for people to, you know, have food delivered to the neighborhoods, but you also have to think about all the brick-and-mortar restaurants here in the community that have to pay rent and electric and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, I know we have a few restaurants, not a whole lot to choose from, but you got to think about those folks that have invested that much kind of money and then have a small truck come in, so we need to, we need to try to figure out some kind of balance for all that. And thank you for the comments for the King George Sheriff's Office. Yes, they've done a great job. They continue to do a great job, and I know Sheriff Giles will lead that ship, you know, very well for the future. But thanks for those kind words for them. And Brandy, sorry, I didn't get your last name. The solar, like I said, it's something that we have to work on, you know, here in the future. And we will get people's opinions on that. It's not something that we are going to do just on a whim, or if we want to, we always listen to what people have to say. Teachers, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think me personally, they need to be back in school. I mean, I think that's a good thing for everybody, kids, teachers, the whole works, but that's just my personal opinion. School board are all elected officials, and, you know, they kind of do what they want. You know, and as you said, we do control some of their budget, but like Mr. Granger said, we don't want to, you know, have the kids be short on anything. But I agree, they need to be back. Voter, I can't speak on that. I know Mrs. Gump's office has done a great job, and I thank her as well for everything that their office did. And, you know, I hear and I look in the news, and if you can believe the news or not, about, you know, the Dominion and all the other kind of stuff, but I can't speak to that. I mean, that's, you just have to look at the news sources. But I feel, I feel pretty confident that here in King George County, the people who voted here, their votes counted. And then getting back to my report, Saturday, 31st, Mrs. Kupka, Mrs. Binder and I got to plant all the flags up there at the library for Flags for the Heroes and had a great time. It was a good turnout, and we had some good Halloween costumes helping. We had Batman and some super folks to help plant the flags. Congressman Whitman was there with some of his staff to help as well. That was a great thing. I did not get to help, I did not get to pick them up with them on Veterans Day. I had other committees. I also attended the CIP meeting that we had, our first, November 2nd. I attended the VACO Environmental Committee meeting. We did that virtually. On the 11th and 12th, and one of our major, a couple of our major rain events, I did ride around some of the neighborhoods in the Dogron area that were prone to flooding. I did speak to some residents there about the flooding problems. I did talk to VDOT about it as well, took some pictures, and spoke to a couple of neighbors, and they were, had been complaining about people actually raking leaves and debris out of their yard into the ditches so they wouldn't have them in their lawn. But what that does is create, you know, plugs in the pipes, which then flood the entire neighborhood. So I just remind people, you know, if everybody cleaned out the ditches in front of their own houses, that the water would flow a whole lot easier. It's kind of like when the snow is on the sidewalks. If everybody shovels their own little sidewalk, the entire sidewalk gets done. The morning of Saturday, the 14th, I attended the grand opening of Main Gate Nutrition, which is right there at the traffic light at Potomac and Dowron across from Potomac Elementary School. It's a health store that does smoothies and coffees and all kinds of stuff, foods, and they had their opening that day, so if anybody's in the area and they want to stop in, by all means, jump in there and go see Wendy and have her hook you up with some food. The 14th, like the rest of us, we attended the closeout fireworks. Great show. Thanking Mr. Gravitz and all the staff that worked on that. Probably one of the best fireworks displays I've ever seen, you know, probably in the top three. I mean, it was really excellent showing, and it was just great to see everybody turn out there. You know, it was a beautiful evening with lots of people there. I was really happy to see all the cars. I didn't have to walk a long ways, but I was happy to see those cars. I do have two appointments to our boards.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I would like to nominate Nathan Ackerman to the Parks and Advisory Committee for Dowron. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And then I also have somebody for the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, which is Cecil Chapman from the Dogron area.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And Mrs. Gump, I see you back there. Thank you so much to you and your staff for everything that you guys did during the whole voting turnout and everything. You guys did a fantastic job. And Dr. Young, the cigarette taxation authority, what's going on with that? I mean, you don't have to get into it right now, but for the next meeting that we have, could you kind of give us a briefing on that?
Yes, sir, certainly can.
On the next, on the next time around?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Kupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Dodge, thank you very much for coming out tonight. I won't reiterate what my colleague said about tax increases. With regard to solar farms, we did actually, well, when I say we, the governing body, not myself, because it was prior to my time on the Board of Supervisors, but I do note in municide code that a solar farm amendment to the zoning ordinance was enacted on December 20th, 2016. So solar farms are permitted by special exception. So any solar farm that wants to locate here must apply for a special exception permit through the Community Development Office, and it goes through the zoning process, the plan and commission, and then it comes to the Board of Supervisors. To my knowledge, there has only to date been one applicant receive said special exception permit, and they extend requests to extend their permit from year to year, but have not gone active, to my knowledge. Is that correct, Ms. Hall? Thank you very much. Food trucks, you and I spoke at length about this when you did your civic duty and voted, and I definitely, again, appreciate your concern. And as my colleague said, I feel like we will probably get there, but we do want to make sure we do it right, and that it's the right thing for our community as well. So thank you again for coming out, Ms. Dodge. Ms. Lavelle, thank you very much for coming out and sharing your compliments of our sheriff's office. We appreciate it. Thank you. And Ms. Kessler, am I saying your name correctly, ma'am? Kessler? I'm sorry, I completely missed it. Thank you very much. So I would reiterate what I stated with regard to solar farms to Ms. Dodge. So we already do have an ordinance procedure for allowing those here in the county, and we have for almost four years. So what you're going to hear tonight is a little bit different. With regard to the schools, so this Board of Supervisors has requested an audit of the school board in their expenditures of the CARES Act funds that we allocated to the school board, to the schools. So we can't really audit any funds that the state directly allocated to King George County schools, but we have requested that information to ensure that those funds were spent according to how it was requested of us. So I have two children at the high school. So I have two children at the high school. My kids will be okay. But to me, the continued closure magnifies the equity issues that many of the children in our community are experiencing, whether that's you don't have adequate internet access, whether you have a two-parent household or a single-parent household, and all of the parents are working during the day, and they can't afford to quit their jobs, and they can't stay home and watch their younger children. And I'm hearing stories of older siblings having to watch the younger siblings and walk them through their lessons and make sure they're staying on school. And then perhaps the older students, the middle school and high schoolers are falling behind in, frankly, in their own schoolwork. There was a presentation in the packet from last night's school board meeting that frankly, I found one of the slides very concerning, and that was the slide with regard to the failure numbers. There weren't rates because there weren't percentages expressed, and there were not the total number of students expressed. But there were numbers for grades seven through 12, students failing, students failing one class, students failing two classes, three or more classes, high school students failing all four classes. And I really feel it's a problem, so I definitely share your concerns in that regard. But again, we control the purse. I would remind you to continue to share your concerns with the school board as well. And as far as the voting issues and the state-level mandates, there's not a whole lot that we can do with regard to that. But thank you again for coming out and expressing your concerns with us tonight. So I'd like to move on to the rest of my report. I will try to cut some things short. As Mr. Stonehill mentioned, attended the flag planting. Want to thank the Rotary Club for doing that. That was a great event. Let's see. Monday, November 9th through Wednesday, November 11th, attended the virtual VACO Annual Conference with Chairman Bender. The economic development breakout session was interesting as it had a lengthy discussion about battery storage, and that's something that we will consider later this evening. The budget update was very eye-opening. We can expect an austere state budget the next several years and likely a recession in education funding from the state. I, too, attended the fireworks on last Saturday night. I want to thank everyone for that. It was phenomenal. They were, without a doubt, the best fireworks I have ever seen. I hope that maybe in the future, my colleagues and I would entertain a discussion of maybe trying to do it annually for 4th of July, but that's for another night. I want to give a shout out to staff. Thank you very much to the Department of General Properties team and the assigned Sealston Maintenance Staff members that regraded and laid new gravel in the authorized vehicles-only parking area between the Comfort Station and the Pavilion at Sealston Sports Complex. It was a mud pit when I was there a few weeks ago, and last week I returned to see it had been completely transformed. I have a board appointment. I have a vacancy on the EDA due to a citizen, I'm sorry, and I should spell out, EDA is the Economic Development Authority, due to a citizen having moved outside the county. I move to appoint Mr. Richard Parker, owner of Creation Steel Fabricators Incorporated, to serve the remainder of the term that expires on May 31st, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you. A grant opportunity that I want to bring to everyone's attention, and I had Dr. Young forward this information to all of you last week. So last week, the National Park Service opened its African American Civil Rights Grant Fund, which is typically announced every fall. Preservation projects, which includes construction and renovation of buildings, have a floor, so that's the lower limit, of $15,000 and a ceiling of $500,000, and there is no local cost share or match required. I am requesting consensus of the board tonight to direct staff to submit a grant application for the Ralph Bunch High School to obtain $500,000 in funding to support renovation of the school. I've spoken to the county engineer, and he believes we could reasonably replace the roof and perform hazard, as in mold-water damage mitigation, for that dollar figure. I would also note that there are several projects which have been funded for the full ceiling amount a number of recurring times. So perhaps there may be an opportunity after a Phase 1 award to obtain grant funding in multiple future years as well. I also have spoken to representatives of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association and the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanity Center, and both have agreed to submit letters of support for a proposed application.
Do we have a vote or a motion?
Was it a motion or was it just concurrence from the board?
I asked for consensus of the board.
Okay, consensus. Do we have consensus?
I absolutely give consensus. As long as the county still owns Ralph Bunch, we're responsible for the maintenance of it, and we don't need another, well, it's in the same situation as the old middle school. So if we have an opportunity to do something outside of the local tax base, I would like to look at that, given that we're facing a recession, given the fact that our tax dollars are stretched to the max. We need to take advantage of something like this to address our current infrastructure. I know the Infrastructure Advisory Committee is currently looking at that building to see how that could be utilized. I know we have arrangements with Arts and Humanity Center, so we need to maintain that building. And I think this is a great avenue to go down. So I thank Ms. Cupka for bringing that to our attention, and I give my consensus.
Mr. Granger, Mr. Stonehill?
Agree.
Yes.
I agree with that, too. No matter what we use with the building, we need to shore up that roof and do some mold mitigation. So I am supportive of that. So Dr. Young, you get the staff to work on that. Thank you very much. Ms. Cupka?
Thank you all, colleagues. So with your consensus tomorrow, I will be contacting Representative Rob Whitman, Senator Mark Warner, and Governor Ralph Northam's offices for letters of support that we can attach to the grant application as well.
Thank you.
And I have one more thing. I do know this will disappoint some of you, but I'd rather not disappoint myself, because over a year ago, I gave my word. And to me, I have a code, and there are two things no one can take from you unless you let them, your word and your good name. So with that, Madam Chair, in abundance of caution and in order to avoid any impropriety and the appearance of impropriety, I am disqualifying myself from participation in the village's public hearing and all related matters, including discussion and voting. This potential conflict arises as a result of having received and reported in-kind campaign contributions from the applicant. Thank you, Madam Chair. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to everyone who gave public comment tonight, thank you for coming out. It's great to hear from people, especially with some of the topics that were brought up tonight. So to the tax concerns, for three years, this board has not increased the tax rate. Now, value in homes go up, so people have paid more due to the economy. You've paid more, but the tax increase has not gone up. But this year is going to be different. I'm not saying that there's going to be a tax rate increase. What I'm saying is, in all reality, the county is facing a recession. And elections have consequences. And I've been very vocal, I'm not happy with, I'm not a fan of our General Assembly and the direction they have taken and the results of those elections that gave us our General Assembly. There are unfunded mandates. There are mandated services. So there are services that the county has to provide by law with no funding from the state associated with it. So we need to look internal. And what I would say to the public is, you have an opportunity to have your voice heard when the budget is being constructed, when we have budget work sessions. Barely anybody shows up to these things. You could even just write an email, but you have to engage with your elected officials. Now, I know on my social media, when I see citizens out in public, I tell them, look, the budget work session's coming up. Please consider attending. If you can't, please submit correspondence. You rarely hear from anyone during these budget work sessions, but that's when your county budget is being discussed. So to the schools, the point about the schools, absolutely. The schools need to open. So first off, I'd like to say thank you to my colleague that serves on the school board for my district, Mr. TC Collins, who has been very vocal about opening up the schools. As soon as the school board pushed back their opening date for K through 2, that night, I sent an email requesting an immediate audit of all CARES Act funding that came from the county under the guise of opening the schools. They said, this money's needed so that we can open the schools, and schools still have not opened, which brought us to our CIP work session where the school board was requesting six school buses in their fleet because of mileage. Well, if you look at, the schools haven't been open since March. I requested to cut that number in half right away, saving $300,000 in CIP funds, and we're going to look at the CIP tonight, and there's going to be further discussion about the three remaining buses. Last night, I listened to the school board meeting. I didn't put this on my public page, but I feel appropriate to read it tonight. Listening to our school board meeting, absolutely frustrated. Who gives a hoot about athletics right now when students aren't allowed in the buildings? But as athletes, they are allowed in the gym. Their primary function is education, and they are failing. I understand students want their athletics, but they are students first. There are serious issues, and athletics at this point is not the primary issue. The King George High School senior that gave public comment last evening has my admiration. She displayed logic, rationale, and leadership, which gives me faith in our future. Bozoo, young lady. It took a high school student to sound more intelligent. I'm sorry if it's demeaning, but she made more sense than our school board. Again, elections have consequences. People need to start looking at when they not only vote for the president or your senator, but when you vote for your local Board of Supervisors and your school board. So I encourage people to take a look at that. What happens in your locality has more of an impact on your daily lives than anything that's happening in the White House. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke. I could keep, my colleagues all mentioned all the topics, but I want to address one topic, and then I'll get to a few other items, because I want to keep it brief, because we're going to be, I think, a little late tonight. So concerning the schools, I agree, let's get them open. I know I have a fifth grader who is doing okay in classes, but the social aspect, she really needs to be in school. And we have, my husband's teleworking at home. I chair three, two boards and the GWRC, and I have a 20-year-old who's doing college at home and a fifth grader. That can be, I had to answer a phone from somebody in the audience who came up and spoke today, and I had to go outside in the cold weather just so I didn't bother everybody else having schooling. And I'm privileged to be home, but there's a lot of people that are not. There's a lot of people that don't have that opportunity, and it's not their fault that their kids might be failing. It's because they just have to work or other response. Somebody's a grandparent and doesn't have that much patience. I don't know what it is. But I will relate. One story that means a lot to me today, that has always meant a lot, is, a lot of people know I coached for many years in this community. I substitute taught, I did long-term subs, I did all of that. But I had a young lady who, I monitored SOL testing. How boring, but I loved it, because the kids that I monitored in SOL testing were all the kids that needed to graduate, and they had to take these tests over again, probably the second or third time, because they needed them to graduate because of SOL Virginia requirements. And this young lady, I stayed there all day with her, made sure she got some lunch I had brought down from the cafeteria, because she had to pass to graduate. And so I saw this young lady a couple of years ago, and it had been 10 years since I did this. And she came up to me, and she goes, do you remember me, Ms. Bender? I said, you know, I remember your face. I'm so sorry. I've, you know, I've made so many kids, and I coached so many kids. I apologize. I know your face, I remember you. And she goes, I want to thank you. Because she said, I graduated, and I'm helping my mom run a business because you took the time to care and get me lunch and sit with me and say, it's okay, you know, just take your time in your SOL testing. And it meant a lot to her to pass and graduate. And now she's operating a business with her mom because she graduated. And that means a lot to me, and that's why schools should open, because if she was sitting at home, she might not pass her SOL, because there was nobody there to see she needed a little encouragement. It wasn't that she was a failure, it was because she needed the encouragement of a teacher or somebody there with her, not a computer screen. And I just want to say, that's why, to me, schools should open, because it's important to every kid, especially to the young folks who have never been in school, have known of that structure. My fifth grader, she has structure because she's been in a classroom. But K through 2, they haven't been in a structure, and what are we setting up for the failure in the future if they've never had that structure at the beginning? I know that's a little long-winded, but I think it needed to be said. With that, I will move on, and I'll just talk briefly about things I've done. I want to thank all of our staff for our wonderful fireworks display. As all of my colleagues have said, it was the best of I've ever seen. And I thought the Phillies game I attended a couple of years ago where the fireworks were going right over top of me was amazing, but these were even better than that. And kudos to Mr. Grabitz and everyone on our staff that helped out with this event. It was wonderful to see about 800 people out there that love King George and wanted something to feel better about and to make them uplifting. And I didn't see one sad face leaving that place, and I think that's important to mention. You know, I hope it uplifted some spirits. Smoot Library, Friends of the Smoot Library Board, they need some help. A lot of them are older. Some of them can't come out and help anymore because of their concern about COVID, which I understand, being older. So if there's any young people out there or anybody in the community who would like to volunteer for the Friends of the Smoot Library, just remember, our Smoot Library has been open this whole time in COVID, doing curbside pickup. And Kearl, which is the Central Rappahannock Regional Library, which a lot of our surrounding communities use, hasn't been open. Our library's been open. So if anybody can come out and help them out, they sell books to fund the library with the money that we can't give them or the state doesn't give. So it's really important. So if anybody can help them out, please come and help out the Friends of the Library, or just donate books, because they sell them for the library. The old VACO, I wanted to mention the state mandates. Mr. Bush brought that up, and the things that Ms. Cupka said. People don't realize, a lot of these laws that are made down in the legislature, they pass them on, and then they don't fund them, and then who has to come up with this? It's us and you guys, because you're the taxpayers. So just remember that. Contact your state legislators, tell them that you don't like these mandates. And in these conferences, they told us about a lot of mandates that are going to be coming down the pike, and Governor Northam doesn't want to fund them. We were going to end up probably having to fund that. So just remember that, and take a look yourself and become informed citizens. I know a lot of you are, but just take a peek at that. And the last thing I want to mention is, as I mentioned earlier, that I'm the chairwoman of the GWRC, which is the George Washington Regional Commission. We had a Go Virginia Jobs, I might have got that wrong, but I thought it was great on Friday. But the point is, they're talking about becoming a regional identity. And I know one of the things that I've been pushing is us to working as a region, because we succeed as a region. We have two large localities in the city of Fredericksburg, Caroline and King George are small localities. But working together, we can get more grant money, because they look at those things. And one of the things GWRC does is, they fund surveys and other things that we have to use, like with SmartScale, to be able to apply for these funds to help the community. And so I've been working really hard to get unity amongst the board and us to not be all separate, to try to all be together as equal, so that we can do more greater things for the area. So that is the end of my board report. I don't want to keep it too long, and we will move on to a motion from the consent agenda.
Second.
Do you have a second? All right. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
If the clerk could please, if the clerk, if the clerk could please note, when the minutes are recorded- minutes are recorded, please, that there are two sets of minutes that we're voting on in the consent agenda tonight, and I was absent for the October 20th, 2020 meeting. So I choose to abstain from approving those minutes due to my absence. I did review the recording online, but I will abstain. Thank you.
Roger, ma'am.
We need two separate motions then, Madam Chair.
All right. So, hold on, let me, can I have a motion on the first? How about everything with, which minutes we're up?
I'll look at an amendment to approve the consent agenda assigned for the minutes from the meetings.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. So let's do the, Mr. Granger, can you help me out since you have it up there?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from the Tuesday, October 6th Board of Supervisors meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Granger?
I move to approve the Tuesday, October 20th meeting minutes for the Board of Supervisor.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries four and one abstain. Thank you. Hold on. Now we're up to county officials' reports. Sheriff Giles with the King George County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Many Americans rise and sleep under the very blanket of freedom that the men and women of our military provide. As you all know, there isn't a nobler sacrifice one can make than to give one's life for the freedom of another. On December 21st, 2004, one of King George County's own did just that. Nicholas Conan Mason was 20 years old when he gave the ultimate sacrifice while serving with the 276th Engineered Battalion in Iraq. I'm before you this evening to request that you adopt the following resolution, naming the Port Royal Bridge over the Rappahannock River on Route 301, which is the James Madison Parkway, to state that it's the Sergeant Nicholas C. Mason Memorial Bridge for his ultimate sacrifice on December 24th, 2004. Deputy Schreiber did a lot of research in order to put this resolution together, so I'm going to go ahead and have him read the resolution.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Naming the Port Royal Bridge over the Rappahannock River on Route 301, James Madison Parkway, adjoining the counties of King George and Caroline, be named as a Sergeant Nicholas C. Mason Memorial Bridge. Whereas Army Sergeant Nicholas C. Mason of King George, Virginia, assigned to the 276th Engineer Battalion, Virginia Army National Guard, West Point, Virginia, was killed on December 21st, 2004 during an attack in Mosul, Iraq. Whereas Section 33.2-213 of the Code of Virginia authorizes a Commonwealth Transportation Board, CTB, to give suitable names to state highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities, and change the names of any highway, bridge, interchanges, or other transportation facilities forming a part of the system, systems of state highways. And whereas Section 33.2-213 provides that the Virginia Department of Transportation shall place and maintain appropriate signs indicating the names of highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities named by the CTB, and requires that the cost of the production, placing, and maintenance, such signs shall be paid by the localities in which they are located. Now therefore be it resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors, in accordance with Section 33.2-213 of the Code of Virginia, does hereby request that the CTB name Port Royal Bridge over the Rappahannock River on Route 301, James Madison Parkway, adjoining the counties of King George and Caroline, be named as a Sergeant Nicholas C. Mason Memorial Bridge. Be it therefore further resolved that King George County Board of Supervisors agree to pay the cost of production, placing, and maintaining the signs, calling attention to this naming. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there's, there's two corrections I'd like to make to this resolution. It falls under the fourth paragraph. Now therefore be resolved in that paragraph. It should strike the word "on" after Board of Supervisors. And then two more sentences down, add the word "bridge" to name Port Royal Bridge over the Rappahannock. If this board is, if this board adopts this resolution, our next step would be to go in front of Caroline's Board of Supervisors with the same resolution, asking them to adopt it as well, since it's adjoining counties. We have to get their, their permission and their buy-in.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the resolution naming the Port Royal Bridge over the Rappahannock River on Route 301, James Madison Parkway, adjoining the counties of King George and Caroline, be named as the Sergeant Nicholas C. Mason Memorial Bridge, as presented with corrections.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys, for your work.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Ms. Lori Gump with the King George Registarr's Office, giving us our election
Good evening, honorable board members. Dr. Young, Mr. Britton. First of all, I'd like to set the record straight. King George County does not use Dominion Voting Systems. We have not used Dominion Voting Systems since 2016. The systems that we use in our county is heart intercepting, and they come very highly recommended because of their secure. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to come to speak to you tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank some very important people who helped make this November election, the June primary, and the March primary election a success. First off, thank you to Sheriff Giles and his deputies, not only for the November election where they stayed at the precincts all day to make sure that everyone was safe, but also for the June primary where we did our drive-through voting. Sheriff Giles had deployed deputies all day to the high school, to Silston and to Potomac in June as well, to make sure everything was running smoothly. We appreciate them so much and are so blessed that they continue to watch out for our office. Thank you to Jimmy and his team for helping with the November and the June primary. They came in and picked up all of our materials for both elections, followed us around, delivered, and stayed to help set up the polling locations. They also made sure and made our precinct protection barriers for the check-in stations for the November election. Thank you to the Parks and Rec staff for getting my envelopes ready for the November election. Thank you to David Moody, Steve Lind and their team for the generators, water, and tents for the June election. Thank you to the volunteers for my office, Ann Lasher, Carol Sparble, Harold, Howard Nelson, who, by the way, is 91 years old, Barbara Wilkes, Cindy Sanchez, Amelia Kennedy, who came to help clean the voting booths, assist the voters, put labels and envelopes for absentee ballots, help with curbside voting, and any other task that they were asked to do. Thank you to my staff, Jenzy, Meredith, and Vicki. Their support and amazing endurance of strength and ability to step up when things needed to be done was truly a blessing. These three ladies worked countless hours to help when changes had to be made to make sure we made deadlines. They also made sure, when my stress level was at its peak, not to let me answer the phone. That's an inside joke because they wouldn't let me answer the phone. My electoral board members, I am so blessed to have Rick, Nancy, and John. Their support and trust in my office for always being available when needed, for believing in the process and knowing that King George County elections are run with the utmost integrity without fraud and deceit. As you can see, this is not a one-man show. It takes the whole community to run elections, both big and small. We have run three elections this past year, two of them being in a pandemic, which held their own complications. The March election was very uneventful. We had 2,531 voting at the polls and 111 absentee ballots, which brought out a 15% turnout. The June dual primary was a bit more challenging due to the now restrictions on polling places, lack of officers of election, the mandate of wearing masks, et cetera. For this election, we decided to do a drive-through voting in your car. The routes were mapped out again with the help of the sheriff's office, and tents were put up at Silston Elementary, Potomac, and three polling places were combined at the high school, Shiloh Courthouse and Monroe, where three tents were all put up. Not only did we have outside set up voting, we had to make sure that inside was ready in case of bad weather, which meant that voting booths, machines, tables, et cetera, were all set up as well. The night before the election, as we were finishing, a huge storm came and blew down two of our tents in the courthouse parking lot. This was the first time, I think, that my stress level just kind of started going up and hasn't come down until just recently. I were so fortunate in King George to have the officers of elections who step up. They stayed outside in weather that was brutal heat from 4:30 in the morning till 7:00 at night. I am so very humbled and proud of the teams that step up to help with the elections. For that election, we had 1,770 Rs at the polls voting and 245 ABs, and 735 Ds at the polls voting and 467 absentee voters. That was 15% again. The November election proved to be one of the highest turnouts that we have had in King George since I've been a registrar. From June until November 13th, our office has been inundated with applications for absentee ballots, voter registrations, and directions from the state, changing procedures on what can and cannot be done for the November election, and phone calls about election and voter fraud up until last Friday. We processed from October 1st until the deadline of October 16th, 275 new voter registration applications, and from January 1st until October 1st, 1,275. For the November 3rd election, we had 7,156 early voters come to my office. These were either voters who came in or who stayed in their car for us to bring them a ballot. We mailed out 2,859 ballots. I decided to time the process of mailing an absentee ballot. It takes anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes for each package to be put together to mail a ballot. That is from start to finish, printing the app, logging it in, processing it on our system, to the envelopes and labels that are placed on them. That's not even taking it down to the treasurer's office and getting postage. In person at the polls for this election was 4,417. 2,651 ballots came back from the mail, and, as I said, 7,156 early vote. That's a total of 14,244, making our overall turnout at 77%. 54% was early voting and 23% at the polls. Right now, our registered voter count is 18,567. There's just a few things I want to go over. Early voting is not going to go away. It was a bill that the members of the General Assembly wanted for a long time, so moving forward, some changes will need to be made. I do not think we'll see the overwhelming amount of people that we did for this election, but I do feel that people will continue to come in because it, rather than going to the polls, because it was so easy. There were several hurdles that we had to cross for this election. Right before the deadline of September 18th, to have all the ballots out that we have been processing since June, we received guidance from the state stating that envelopes that we used for years, that Parks and Rec had put together for me, were not, we were not allowed to use those, nor were the labels that were already placed on them. We already had them labeled, stuffed, and ready to go, and we were just waiting for the ballots. We had to reorder all new envelopes, relabel them with new labels that had to have an intelligent barcode on them so the public could track their ballots that were mailed. That was over 1,690 envelopes and labels that needed to be changed in a short period of time. The ballot order was ready to go into production when we got a call stating that Kanye West could not be on our ballot. I remember it was a Thursday evening around 8:00 PM. I had just gotten home and turned around, came back to the office to send an email to stop production of 11,000 ballots from my vendor and restart the whole certification process with the state so new ballots could go out and be ordered without Kanye West on them, to get them in time for the September 18th deadline. We were told we needed drop boxes for each of our polling locations and that our CAP team, Central Absentee Precinct, had to stay until the ballots that were dropped off in those boxes were brought back to my office the night of the election and run through the voting machine. They had to stay until the ballots were run through the machine or to 11:00, whichever came first. There was not a lag time where the ballots did not get counted on the day, night of the election. All ballots were counted on November 3rd, 2020, with the exception of provisional and late postmarked ABs. We had 32 provisional ballots with only three of them not counting because they were not registered. When the special session of the General Assembly met, one of the other piece of guidance that was given to us was ballot curing. Every ballot that came in, we had to open out the outer envelope that contained the ballot and make sure that that was filled incorrectly, that they had their address on correctly, that they had signed it. They did not need to have a witness. And we had to do that within three days of receiving that, to give the people time to come in. This is the first year that we were allowed to accept ballots that were postmarked by election day up until Friday noon after the election. We had 11 postmarked ballots, and all of them were counted. I know there's a lot of talk from the media about voter fraud, ballots not being counted, et cetera. I can only speak for King George County when I say that none of this has taken place in our county. And my opinion, and this is just my opinion, where the fraud or deceit could possibly come into play is if you do not have trust in your frontline team. My chiefs and assistant chiefs in each of the precincts are the ears and eyes of the process during the day. I will not put somebody in a chief or an assistant chief position that has not worked at least a couple of years as a regular officer of election. The chiefs and the assistant chiefs in King George County have been with me in their roles some for over 20 years. I cannot say enough that King George County is very fortunate to have the volunteers and workers who devote their day to come out and help make the voting process safe in each year. I am grateful that my staff, my electoral board members, my officers of election had stayed healthy through all this. We now move on to the next election and redistricting on our heels. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gump? We just want to really thank you and your staff for everything you do. Thank you very much. All right, our report from the county attorney, Mr. Britton.
Yes, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to say that while I was looking through my emails as Lori was talking, and while all that was happening, we had, she was asking me legal questions along the way. She had to deal with disabilities with the COVID, the COVID consolidation of polling places, signs at polling places, the new regulations, had to attend the updated regulations, and has been emailing me about the new redistricting, which doesn't even take place until 2021. So there's, I just wanted to say, there's a lot in the background, and I've been given advice to Lori for years and her predecessor as well, and this one is the heaviest lift I think that, that someone could have had to deal with. So I also wanted to say thank you. Thank you for that indulgence. You asked me to file applications for trademark for the county seal. That has been done and granted through a little bit of a snafu. It didn't get into the packet, but it's been sent to you by email now, and we can put that on the website. There's not much to explain. We filed the applications, and they said, fine. And there's a little bit more to come on that. The, also, it was brought to my attention through our process, which works, that we have some leases coming up, and as those leases come up, they get sent to me, and I do legal review on them. One of the things that I take a look at is, are they compliant with the current status of the code, such as drug-free workplace, anti-discrimination clauses, and things like that? And oftentimes, they're not because many of these years are, many of these leases are multi-year leases. Two examples- Two examples of that are the King George DSS lease, which actually we enter into on behalf of DSS and gets reimbursed, and the cooperative extension lease through the same landlord. I don't negotiate the business terms. That's up to Neiman and the county. But, so he gives me the business terms. I did go through them, again, through the same email mix-up. You didn't get those, but they've been sent to you now. I have reviewed those, much to the chagrin, I think, of the landlord, although he is a lawyer. I think I tripled the length of it and put in all of the required code sections for those leases, and put in a bunch of other protections that I felt were beneficial to the county. Neiman agreed, spoke with the, did some negotiation back and forth with the landlord. Also, he's granted us a right of first refusal, which was requested by the DSS if anything opens up. And he's also offered a small space next to the cooperative extension if we were to need that and to blow out a wall, but those aren't included in the lease because that hasn't been discussed for their budget. But those are on the table as offers. So you didn't get them. I don't know if you were going to read them, every paragraph, anyway, but they are in good form, and all of our changes were included. All of the legal changes and the wording were included, and it's, I think it's more mutual and certainly stronger for the county in that it complies with law. Both of them, there's two. Cooperative extension and King George DSS is a five-year, five-year lease.
Do we need to make a motion on those?
Yes, you need to make a motion and vote separately on each of them to authorize the county administrator to enter into the King George DSS. The first one would be to authorize the county administrator to enter into the King George Department of Social Services lease extension beginning December 1st, 2020, for five years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Britton, can I just ask, the only thing I noticed, and maybe this is just a formatting error, but in looking through, there seems to be a, it's not a footnote, a footer, a running footer on every page that says Page 5 on the, let's see which one I'm looking at. I wouldn't think that would affect anything materially, but...
Thank you. We just sent it, so I haven't seen what has been sent to you, but that wasn't on the original, but will?
Yeah, if we could just correct that.
Just keep saying Page 5.
Yep. King George Village Office Center, Center lease.
Those are pro forma. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I don't think that may need to be in the motion, but if you wanted a friendly amendment, correcting formatting.
Thank you. Yes, please. All friendly amendments to correct the, to remove the footer, correct the formatting, please.
Move to amend my motion per the request. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Madam Chair, the other motion would be on the King George Cooperative Extension Lease, authorizing the county administrator to sign the extended lease on the terms set forth in the document presented, beginning December 1st, 2020, with any formatting errors that might need...
It's the same on that one, too. Yes, please.
There must have been some sort of PDF transcription. I apologize.
Do I have a motion?
Move with the same corrections.
I have a motion and properly second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Britton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing further.
That's the end of your report?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, we will be moving down to 11:04, which is our action items. Department of Finance Professional Services Agreement for the New Courthouse Project. Dr. Young, are you doing that one?
Yes, we have the call, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ms. Cobb?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here. Good evening to Madam Chair, members of the board. Navita Cobb on behalf of Finance. So this evening, I'm here to discuss the Professional Services Agreement for the New Courthouse Project. In December 2019, proposals were received from six firms in response to RFP number 1211-2019 for professional design and construction administration services associated with the New Courthouse Project. The proposals were evaluated by a selection committee consisting of Dr. Young, Vic Mason, and Travis Cousenberry. Based on the proposals and interviews with the three highest-ranked firms, the selection committee ranked Mosley Architects as the most qualified firm for this project, and commenced negotiating a scope of services and fees. Negotiations were completed in March of 2020. The project consists of professional design and construction administration services associated with the design and construction of the new courthouse of approximately 50,000 square feet, with provisions for future expansion of up to 65,800 square feet. The new courthouse will be located on approximately 5.5 acres of county-owned land, located across from the sheriff's office, and I've attached the two proposals that provide the detailed scopes of work and the fee breakdowns in the packet. The project will be delivered using a construction manager at risk delivery method and constructed under a single stipulated sum construction contract pursuant to solicitation of contractors through the request for proposed competitive negotiation process. Therefore, I recommend that the board of supervisors authorize the county administrator to execute a professional services agreement, architectural, engineering, and construction administration services associated with the New Courthouse Project in the amount of $1,379,156, with Mosley Architects subject to approval as to form by the county attorney, and this project will be funded by the project bond. And that is all, Madam Chair.
Dr. Young, I just wanted to make, this is a different kind of way we're going to do supervision of this project. Could you just explain briefly to the public?
Yes, ma'am. The middle school expansion project was performed under a design bid-build process for construction, where there's a design that's made by the architectural firm, they then put out the bid, a construction company then reviews those plans, and they bid on how much it's going to cost to construct it. The difference with the construction manager at risk is the construction company is actually brought in on the front end of the process. So we'll actually be putting out a bid to get a contractor construction company to participate in the design of the facility. So if the construction manager at the beginning of the process is working hand-in-hand with the architectural firm to do the designs of the courthouse, the construction manager then assumes responsibility for any change orders or subsequent changes to those designs when it goes into construction. So that's why it's called a construction manager at risk, because they assume the risk for any change orders that take place during the build-out of the courthouse.
Thank you, Dr. Young. I know Mr. Bush, Mr. Granger and I, for the middle school project, really, it was kind of a burr under our bonnet with all the change orders, so I appreciate you researching and doing this, and I know my colleagues probably feel the same, all of them feel the same way, this is a better, better option. Do I have a motion on this?
I move to authorize the county administrator to execute a professional service agreement with Mosley Architects in the amount of $1,379,156 for professional architectural, engineering, and construction administration services associated with the New Courthouse Project.
Second.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Subject to approval as to form by the county attorney.
I move to amend my motion to include review by the county attorney. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cobb, for your work, too.
Thank you.
All right, then we move on to Department of Economic Development and Tourism, TAC application, King George Parks and Recreation, Sedell Brooks Jr. Park Baseball Field. Mr. Meyer, Mr. Clark?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here to request TAC funds for the Department of Parks Recreation, which is requesting $5,000 for Sedell Brooks Jr.'s park baseball fields, which is in need of an overhaul. Specifically, the infield requires to be regraded, reshaped, base paths recut, mound rebuilt, and low spots filled to allow rental and outside tournament promoters. Earthworks will lay out and correct infield, correct the grade, and apply new infield mix and groom area type to improve playability. They will also rebuild the pitcher's mound to the appropriate height, slope and fill. Sand will be added to infield grass to improve drainage. The TAC recommends that the board of supervisors approve $5,000 for improvements to Sedell Brooks Jr.'s baseball fields. Staff agrees with TAC's recommendation.
Mr. Clark, you want to add anything to that or come up for questions? Anybody have any questions before?
It's a total of a $10,300 project, and so we're asking for half the support from the tourism fund to allow us to improve our tourism opportunities. We were approached by Tri-County Sports, which is the U Triple S.A. baseball organization. We've had to turn them away twice this fall, when they needed an additional field. They were using Sealston, but they needed an additional field, so we turned them away, and they, because that field's not safe, they ended up playing in either Spotsylvania or Stafford County at the time. In addition, Little League has abandoned use of the field because of the safety concerns, and they play their 90-foot games at Sealston or, when possible, at the middle school.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Clark, for these fields, does Parks and Rec receive any revenues, so from Little League or the organization you mentioned earlier, when they utilize these fields to...
Yes, try, when a rental comes in for tri, like, a tournament organizer, they pay a daily rental fee, which was approved by this group in February of this past year. For Little League, they pay a fee of $10 a child per season. So they're, as an affiliate of our, of the Parks and Rec Department, because they offer a program that we do not offer.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Kupka?
I guess I'll save it for discussion, because it's not really a question.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move to approve $5,000 for improvements to the Sedell Brooks Jr. baseball fields from the tourism fund. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kupka?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I would just like to say, I do appreciate, we all appreciate everything that your department does and the general properties department does to maintain the park assets that we have, but sometimes we fall short, and in this particular case, at this park, we have, my own son plays travel baseball. He's played for four years. Two years ago, he was playing U Triple S.A., and before that, he was on the intermediate team for King George Little League, and that was their home field that they could practice on, they could get by practicing on it. We couldn't host any games there for the very reasons that you stated, so I am in full support of this. Thank you very much. My son won't be playing there. He's moved on to bigger fields, but I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Properly second. Any further discussion? Mr. Stonehill? Or just turn it on? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Department of Economic Development and Tourism, TAC application, Sheets to Sheets Trail Run with CO Race Fund Adventures LLC.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board. The Race Fund Adventures LLC is requesting $2,000 from the TAC fund in support of the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run. Sheets to Sheets Trail Run is a unique and fun 14-mile race between King George High School Sheets and the Dahlgren Sheets along the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail. The application is requesting financial assistance to promote marketing professional services for runners and event growth. Funds will be utilized to market outside the county on digital platforms, as well as create race banners, finish line overhead banners that market King George County. Additionally, t-shirts and promotional materials will represent the county as well. Tax recommendation that the board of supervisors approve $2,000 for support of the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run to the marketing and promotion of this event. Staff agrees with tax recommendation.
Do we have any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend that we approved $2,000 of support of the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run to the marketing and promotion of the event.
Go second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Since the last time this event was held, I believe we have a new county attorney, and my understanding is that this event would be using King George County school buses. So I would just ask that we require this applicant to submit his waiver. I note that he does have, it looks like, his own insurance policy from Farm Bureau that's listed as an expense in the application, but if we could have him forward a copy of his liability waiver to our county attorney, given that our county school buses are being used, I would appreciate that.
I'll wait for that. I have not seen that, so thank you for bringing that up. I haven't seen the participant liability waiver for the school buses, and I guess I'll get the schools involved. Neiman and I can figure out how to get the schools involved so that they're correctly indemnified as a separate body politic.
Please, and thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion, properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you once again, Mr. Meyer.
Madam Chair, if I may. So I believe last year, we had some insurance parameters put in place in coordination with the schools to address this run, so we could probably look back into that. And being that they were applying funds and we've used TAC funds for the 300th anniversary events and stuff, I would like to get a breakdown of what the current balance is at the next meeting, so we could see what our current balance is and what future installments we're expecting. TAC fund, I know, you know, we use it sporadically, but I'd like to know what real dollars we're looking at. I'd like citizens to know, hey, this is the pot of money the Board of Supervisors is pulling from, this is what we've narrowed it down to, and this is what we expect coming back in. So if I can get those numbers for the next meeting, I greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Bush, I agree with that, because some people in the public don't realize that a lot like the fireworks display in that is used with tourism funds and not taxpayer funds, and tourism funds are a little different. They come from the meals tax, so meals and lodging tax. But thank you for that clarification, but we can get that, Dr. Young, for the next meeting.
Roger, Madam Chair.
And, Mr. Meyer?
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate all you do, though.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next up is our county administrators' report and the county administration Dominion Power easement agreement. You go with that first, Dr. Young, and then your report.
Roger, Madam Chair. King George County is in a regional partnership with Westmoreland, Richmond, and Northumberland Counties. This partnership also includes Dominion Power and the Northern Neck Electric Co-op. The purpose of the partnership is to pursue a robust broadband project throughout the Northern Neck region. The essence of this project includes leveraging established right-of-way to expand fiber throughout the member localities. Though Dominion Power has already approved easements for the power lines and associated infrastructure, the company is legally required to secure another easement for the fiber. As such, Dominion Power submitted a request for the board of supervisors to approve the attached easement agreement. To accomplish this, the board must first hold a public hearing. Therefore, I would recommend the King George County board of supervisors authorize the county staff to advertise a public hearing to consider Dominion Power's request to approve a utility easement agreement.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Young.
I received correspondence from Carolina County, I'm sorry, Caroline County. Caroline is pursuing a project to withdraw water from the Repahanic River. This project is being pursued to reduce the county's reliance on ground reserves or reservoirs to meet their community's drinking water needs. The project will require approval from the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ. As such, Caroline is requesting the King George County board of supervisors consider writing a letter of support for the project. So I'm asking if the board will authorize the county administrator to write a letter of support for the Caroline Repahanic River Withdrawal Project.
Do I have a motion? Or any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, sorry about that. Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
Can you, can you provide us with any more information about the request? Because to me, it seems a little bit vague.
Yes, ma'am. So Caroline County has been a little bit forward-thinking. They, just like King George County or any locality that depends on aquifers, aquifers to meet their drinking water needs is going to be facing withdrawal restrictions, as Jonathan Weekly talks about consistently and reminds us that we do have these withdrawal restrictions. So Caroline County is pursuing an $8 to $12 million project where they're actually going to reduce their reliance on aquifers by withdrawing water from the Repahanic River versus... versus utilizing groundwater to meet their drinking water needs. They are going to withdraw water from the Repahanic to meet the demands of Caroline County, and then they are going to look at perhaps one day getting into the business of selling water to neighboring localities that may face restrictions and not be able to meet their drinking water needs.
Genius.
It's definitely smart, but obviously, it's also expensive.
Yeah, I had already asked you how this affects any of our permits on the Repahanic, and, Dr. Young?
And the service authority as well.
And the service authority.
Roger. Yes, ma'am, and Jonathan is more than able to answer that question.
Mr. Weekly?
Members of the board, I have to schedule an upcoming meeting with the director there at Caroline County. I'm aware of this, I think there was past discussions of this initiative, and I just had this discussion with the resident engineer, Mr. Meyer, from the Richmond office of EDH just yesterday. This initiative, it is, it's to quit withdrawing from groundwater. That is the main concern. There is discussions of a reserve, a built-in reserve Caroline County would have and commit. So in that case, they would be a wholesaler. I have to be briefed a little more on the project with Caroline County. Obviously, they are the main person who has filed to move forward with this project, but I'll be bringing information back to the Service Authority Board Directors, obviously on the counter side of that to Dr. Young, to brief this body of what may be a partnership and what timelines and commitments will look like for King George County. But that is correct, they are looking at building in a certain reserve of their withdrawal initiative for wholesaling, which King George County could potentially opt in.
Madam Chair, if I may, Jonathan, but I think the question that the board has is, does the withdrawal of surface water impact King George County's limits on our withdrawal of aquifers and groundwater?
The groundwater withdrawal or this surface water initiative?
Will this surface water project have an impact on our groundwater?
The surface water project has no implication or hardships on our groundwater withdrawal. Thank you for restating that.
Do we have any other questions? Ms. Kupka?
Thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Jonathan. I'm not very familiar with this, so I'm not going to pretend that I am, so I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. So, King George inevitably is going to grow with the bridge coming, okay? So eventually, we're going to get to where we're looking at these limitations on our withdrawals. Are we able to buy credits? And I bring that up because if we buy credits as we grow, because we don't want to be stunted, would it be more fiscally advantageous for the county to, let's say, do something similar to what they're doing, or maybe even partner with them and make it a joint venture to where eventually we're selling water instead of having to buy credits, or else we're stunted in growth? Do you know how that works? Could you explain that to me, please?
Yes, sir. So on the credit side, that would address any concerns on the wastewater, because there is a limited amount of allocation. As far as the groundwater initiative, the goal behind this project, or any similar project, is to reduce any withdrawal of the aquifer. So we could partner, but what the DEQ administers this groundwater withdrawal program, what they're looking for is to say, okay, you're looking to partner with, participate in surface water, we want to see reduction in aquifer. So yes, sir, it is a way for us to provide for future development. We know the 301 corridor, we're looking at massive growth. There is a way for us to provide. The way I understand this project, its current stage, and again, I need to meet with counterparts in Caroline County, is that this asset would be, Caroline County's asset, would be more of a purchaser, they would be the wholesaler. This is a way to handle growth from the water side would be with participating in a surface water initiative. On the wastewater side, which is the credits you mentioned, that would be a way to offset. From the credit standpoint, we're doing fine on that perspective, but it is the drinking water side, or the groundwater withdrawal side, that they're really pushing. You can apply for permits right now, you want to expand, there's no guarantee that DEQ will grant you withdrawal requests, or there may be existing systems, and we're learning this, that they can come back and say, look, we want to see a certain percentage reduction. You can say, well, wait a minute, I have existing development or existing customers, they want to see reductions. But it is a way for us to participate to meet our water needs. The credits would be a way to address any development that we would need, additional sewer allocation.
So to me, it looks like Caroline is pretty forward-thinking. However, we can't be ridiculous and say, we need to do this too with a price tag, such as was stated earlier. So with our planning, I say we look at, we know we got Perkins Corner coming down the pipe, and there's a hefty price tag on that. Customers of the service authority simply cannot afford any increases right now. But maybe this is something we can plan for from an infrastructure aspect down the road for the CIP. Maybe we could look at putting something like this five, six years down the road and do something similar, because we know our growth is coming in 10, 20 years, we're looking at doubling in population, whether that's projects coming online or through just simple people buying two and 10-acre lots by right and developing. There's going to be growth in the county, and that's just the fact. So we need to find a way to move forward with that. So I like this idea, so maybe in our, maybe next meeting, we can get a presentation or something to, or some kind of way to incorporate this into our CIP down the road.
Mr. Bush, do you mean into the Board's CIP, or are you referring to the service authority's CIP?
I would actually put this on the Board, not the service authority, because I would be looking at this from an infrastructure aspect, because if a regulatory agency, which basically they can do with whatever they want, Congress basically gave away any oversight to regulatory agencies, except funding. But I would like to look at this as a way for us to address infrastructure needs and demands that inevitably are coming on us, whether it's 10 or 20 years from now. I like the forward-thinking approach that Caroline's doing, and I think we need to get a point, at a point where we're planning, which I think this Board is doing a great job of, planning as opposed to being reactionary, so.
I'm available to having a report as well, I'd like to see that. I would also ask Mr. Britton, if, not to put him on the spot now, but I know the service authority is separate from the county, and so the questions are using county dollars for funding service authority activities. I know you can justify it for, like Mr. Bush was saying, infrastructure and economic development needs, and just to make sure that if this was something that could qualify for that. And I'm not putting you on the spot, my intention is to put you on the spot, give me an answer now, I'm just, something, you know.
I will be able to delineate that. I think, as Ms. Kupka said, I don't think there's enough information right now as to what it is that Caroline's asking to sign on to. It'd be great to see what their program is, what the letter is, perhaps they could draft the letter that they want you to sign, or the portions of the letter they want to see into it, and that would impact the way, who even would be, which Board even would be signing it, one or either or both, and what the impact would be. I understand what Mr. Bush said, but about that it's a possible future thing, because there's a high price tag, but then you might have the county competing with the service authority, is what I'm saying.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
So, can I just add to that? I do note that there is a draft letter or a suggested letter provided for us, but I'm not comfortable moving forward with this tonight on this Board, because I am also, as you know, a member of the Service Authority Board of Directors, and I would like to give our general manager the time to have the meeting, you said tomorrow, Mr. Weekly?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. I have, I will have an upcoming meeting, but it's not tomorrow, no, ma'am.
Okay. I just feel it's necessary for the King George County Service Authority Board of Directors to weigh in on this before we take a formal position and send it to DEQ. Thank you.
I would agree with that, too, because I had one question that popped up is, we're going to give them permission to do this, and then we're talking about buying water back from them, so I would like a little bit more clarification and information, and I know our agenda for the next service authority meeting is a little, a little full, so I would like to see it maybe a report back for the second meeting in December. Is it time-sensitive, Dr. Young?
That I don't know, Madam Chair.
Well, could you check on that for us, please? But I think, Jonathan, I know you're going to be busy for the next meeting, so I, second, do you think you'd be able to have a little, a report for that?
Sure. I mean, I'll see if I can get the meeting sooner, but they definitely can send what information they have. It's my understanding they have a lot of this in draft form, it's trying to understand what would be our point of connection and so forth, whether it's Port Conway coming up 301, so there's just logistical things, but if the timeframe is the first December meeting, I'll try my best for that, but we'll get that meeting as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Weekly. So do I have a consensus from the Board? We'll table it for now and bring it, bring it back later with more information.
I agree, Madam Chair, but I don't think the Board should be giving consensus on something that is in draft form, which can then be amended, but then already has the Board's approval signature on it. So I think if something comes before this Board or the service authority, that it needs to be finalized. I mean, if they're the ones requesting it, they should be able to finalize it before going before another governing body asking for an endorsement. So I would, I would like whatever we or the service authority affixes their signature to, to be finalized. That way, we know exactly what's going on.
So we're good, we'll just table it for now? Okay, we're going to table it for now and get back a report.
Roger, Madam Chair. I'm happy to report the fact Governor Northam has responded to the Board's request to support our quest for the Maryland Transportation Authority to leave a portion of the Old Harry Nice Bridge to serve as a fishing pier. The Governor has asked the Virginia Department of Transportation, or VDOT, to review similar projects, potential maintenance costs, and legal considerations. VDOT intends to provide the Board a report of its findings next month.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Young, first.
I received a request from Jane Van Valza of the National Society of the American Revolution, American Indians Committee. The committee is requesting the Board adopt the attached resolution declaring the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, and I'll read the resolution as presented. A resolution proclaiming November 2020 as Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Now therefore be resolved, we, the King George County Board of Supervisors, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim November as the Native American Heritage Month in King George County, and urge all our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities adopted by the King George County Board of Supervisors this 17th day of November 2020.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Young.
Yes, Madam Chair. I've been asked by members of the Board to investigate the staff's ability to host the King George Christmas tree lighting for 2021, I'm sorry, December 2020. The staff has inventoried the equipment and believe we have the resources necessary to accommodate the event. Details regarding the lighting will be publicized at the Board meeting on December 1st, 2020.
How does everybody feel about that?
I do have a question, Madam Chair. So, I know I personally sent you, and sent you this email, Dr. Young, and called you about this, because I would very much like to see this happen this year. Since then, the new guidelines took effect, so given the gathering limit, can we, I would still like to do it, can we make accommodations to allow for virtual, some type of, we put it out on Facebook Live, or we put it somewhere so that people can watch from home if they don't feel comfortable coming out? But I don't want to cancel the Christmas tree lighting.
Roger.
Thank you.
Roger, ma'am.
Do we have a consensus?
I agree with Ms. Kupka with a virtual option, and we go forward with the Christmas tree lighting, and the Governor has a problem with it, we call it a protest, but we need to move forward with this, we need to have a Christmas tree lighting. It's going to be Christmas, and that's what we do.
All right, we have a consensus.
Finally, Madam Chair, as you all know, Worma Ward is retiring, and she currently serves as the appointee to the Repahanic Juvenile Commission and Finance Committee. In light of her retirement, I'd like to recommend that the Board appoint Ms. Donna Hahn as the representative, appointee to the Repahanic Juvenile Commission and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Doc.
Madam Chair, I do have one more topic to discuss. I'm fully aware that on November 11th, the news of the Northern Neck had reported King George County had entered into a REFA, which is Economic Development Agreement, where there are Northern Neck neighbors, and it was also brought to my attention that Westmoreland amended their ordinance, accepting King George County as a viable member that can be entered into the REFA. I want to make it abundantly clear to not just the Board, but also to the general public that that article is a little premature. The only discussions that's been had with the Northern Neck communities and the Northern Neck Planted District, who is taking the lead on the REFA, is that we would potentially bring something to the Board to consider. We received the potential proposed agreement, and something that's been reviewed, currently under review by Administration, Economic Development Department, and our legal department, just to make sure that we have something that makes sense for King George County, and something that is even legally viable that the Board can consider. So I want to make sure that the record is corrected. King George County is not part of the REFA. I understand that the ordinance in Westmoreland has been amended, however, as always, King George County is going to pursue what is in the best interest of King George County, so we're currently reviewing that proposal, and if we find, if the staff finds that, hey, this is a good option for King George County, and it is in our interest, we'll bring it before the Board, and of course, the Board retains that right to decide if they're going to enter into that agreement or not, so.
Mr. Bush?
So, Dr. Young, thank you very much for giving that clarity. So I saw the article in Northern Neck News, and I shared that article on my county Facebook page. So I would like to put that clarity out as soon as possible to attach to that article so people understand what they're reading. So is there a way you could type something up, and I can put that as an attachment or with that post? I don't want people reading an article that I shared and taking it as, you know, this actually is what's happening, when now we know that article was premature and it's not the actual case.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Kupka.
Two things first, can I recommend that the county attorney draft that language, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Britton? And then, Mr. Bush, you can just edit your post to include the county attorney's language.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to do that. I'm fully aware of the situation, spoken with all the players, including Neiman, so I'm happy to do it, I can give you a single sentence.
Thank you very much. And, Dr. Young, was there another item you were going to share with us during your report tonight, that I think I saw an email about yesterday, that you requested consensus regarding a possible grant opportunity?
That's correct, ma'am. King George County is currently pursuing a portion of the funding that's been set aside by the General Assembly for CARES Act funding. They said, set this funding aside to allocate CARES funding to address broadband issues across local governments. King George County has identified 11 households that Atlantic Broadband, in partnership with the county, can actually run that last mile, last mile fiber to the county, I mean, to the household, and get broadband to those underserved households. The reason why- The reason why the number is 11 is because the General Assembly put a deadline of December 30th in place for the construction on these projects to be completed. After having multiple discussions between the Economic Development Department and Atlanta Broadband, Atlanta Broadband made it abundantly clear that realistically, that they can only really address those 11 households and get those projects completed by the December 30 timeline and remain in compliance with both state and federal law. So we would like to request the board's authorization to move forward with the grant application. And to move forward with that grant application, it would require the signature of the treasurer, the county administrator, and the chairman of the board supervisors. So I'd like to request that the board supervisors authorize the chairman and the county administrator, the permission, I'm sorry, the authority to execute the grant application.
Do we have a motion? Go ahead, Ms. Bush.
Mr. Bush has a question than I do.
Thank you. So did you only, did we only reach out to Atlantic Broadband? Did we reach out to, let's say, KGI or some other provider? That I know Atlantic Broadband actually runs the fiber, but is there a way we could look into what KGI offers that might have a further reach than just 11 homes to get more bang for that buck?
Yes, sir. And Nick, if you elaborate on it, please.
Yes, sir. So we did reach out to KGI. We did get a proposal from them. The only issue that, well, the biggest issue that came up was that the tower that they were requesting was above the 80-foot limit that's permitted by right in the county. So they were requesting a tower to be constructed of 180 feet, which would require us to essentially put in a special exception permit. And we would be basically streamlining a process that requires a lot of due diligence and engineering work. And we just didn't feel like that would be safe for the public at this time. However, we are still entertaining proposals from them into the next year. So if there is a next round of CARES Act funding, we could go about this and do it the right way in a timely fashion. What Atlantic Broadband was essentially providing to us was this is a quick construction. It's going to go underground. They don't have to get permits from the, from Dominion or the Northern Neck Co-op. And all we need is just the permission from the residents. So it's a little bit, it's a lot of backend work that went into this. We had to drop letters off personally. We had to mail them. They could not provide us personal information, only addresses of people who've actually reached out to them and requested the service. And they also looked at the timeline. So that, that's sort of the background of that, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kupka?
So if we receive the funds and the funds come to the locality, Mr. Britton, the mechanism by which we would distribute them is we would allocate them to the political subdivision, the Economic Development Authority, and then they would be able to distribute them to the provider? Is, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be direct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
And if I may, just make a comment on that. So I presented this to the EDA at their previous meeting, and they've already voted to approve this.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the request as submitted.
One second.
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 Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you for your work and your due diligence. All right. Now we come to the main part of the program. We have our public hearings. So public hearing, now, one thing I would like to say before we have the public hearing to those online and those in the public. The public comment, Mr. Bush, is going to be run on the timer. It's a three-minute public comment limit. There are three public hearings. So please come up with, you can come up for all of them or just for the ones that you're interested in speaking about. So please remember that before you come up. So, public hearing number one. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding the FY 2021 to FY 2025 Capital Improvements Projects Plan. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during the public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come up to the podium to speak on this public hearing?
Madam Chair, I was going to, do you want me to do the board report first?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, apologize, thank you.
On October 27, 2020, the King George County Board of Supervisors approved the Attached Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, for fiscal year 2021 through 2025. The document is attached in your packet, and I will do a quick review of the approved plan. The board approved the tennis court reconstruction for Parks and Recreation. And it's approved and it's on hold. The board approved the King George Elementary School Roof Replacement. And it is approved with instructions to move forward with the project. The board approved the school bus replacement at a reduced rate, which was originally recommended $624,000. The board approved $312,000. The board also asked that I reach out to the school superintendent and ensure that $312,000 would be able to pay for three buses. He was able to confirm that that was, that money would go long enough to purchase three buses. The board then approved the $1 million Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project with the understanding that, in the amount of $1 million, with the understanding that that is a grant that will have to pay for construction costs upfront, but will be reimbursed by FEMA. The board also approved the payment of the second year of a 33-year contract for IT's proactive network information management contract in the amount of $117,104. The board approved the community development request for Muni City Software in the amount of $98,635. The board approved the courts building in the amount of $1,400,000 that's being paid in the bond. The board approved the King George County Sheriff's Office Microwave Radio System and Alarm System, year three of five-year purchase contract in the amount of $143,250. And finally, the board approved the replacement, I'm sorry, the fire and rescue facility, $125,000 in support of the fire and rescue department. I'd recommend that the board adopt this year's CIP as presented.
All right, one clarification on the last part, the fire and rescue. You just said the $125,000. That was for what, again?
Land acquisition, ma'am.
Land acquisition. I just wanted to make clarification on that.
And I should also state that that brings the total for this year's capital budget to $1,990,885. Again, $1 million of that is, will be reimbursed to us by FEMA. That will come out of our fund balance. And we'll make sure that that $1 million is also returned to our fund balance.
All right, before I ask some of my questions, does anybody have any questions, concerns, changes to our CIP? I opened it to the public.
We can't make any changes after we hold the public hearing, correct?
Just to clarify, Mr. Britton.
You can make changes after the public hearing.
Can we have it before? Because I just wanted to do it now before we have public comment. Yeah.
So.
If I'm doing it wrong, just tell me, Mr. Britton, so.
I could, just couldn't hear Mr. Bush's question, sorry.
My question is, I have a suggestion or a request to change the CIP that was just presented by Dr. Young. Being we advertised the CIP that he just read, do we have to hold the public hearing prior to my request to change it?
Before the public comment?
Prior to public comment? Or is it after public comment? After the public hearing? What is the legally appropriate way for me to bring in my request to make a change to the CIP that Dr. Young just read?
Either.
Either? Well, I would like the public to be aware of my recommended change before they give public comment.
And that's why I asked.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, I have a recommendation for a change. We, at our work session to approve the CIP, had a lengthy discussion about the schools' request for six school buses. And at the time, we, in discussions with Dr. Benson, we cumulatively, cumulatively came up with the conclusion that three buses being cut would be sufficient. However, a lot has transpired since then. The schools have then decided not to open up to in-person school, which means requirement for transportation, to no sooner than January 15th of 2021. Being the schools were closed since March of 2020, I would say that's nearly a year that school buses haven't been utilized. And the rotation is built around mileage. So we rotate so many buses per year because of mileage that's accumulated, and we rotate the older ones out. Given that this year there wasn't much bus uses, my recommendation would be to strike the three buses that were allocated in the CIP and that $312,000 be returned to the capital fund.
Any other? Richard, Mr. Granger, so apologize.
You asking me for just upon Mr. Bush's recommendation or anything in general?
Mr. Bush's recommendation.
Fair enough. At this point, I would agree with Mr. Bush. It is almost a year. And if there, if there's not a desire for the, the school board to have the students go back, then those buses are not going to be used to the same level. And I would agree. I think we should remove those three buses.
Maybe either of my colleagues like to speak just on this issue, and then I'll open up, Mr. Stonehill?
I would have to agree with, with the other two. And they're, if the schools are not going back into session and they just can't come up with a plan to work out, I think we should remove those three buses as well.
Ms. Kupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too agree. During that budget work session, I specifically asked questions to determine what the true need was for the school bus request, given the circumstances. And we were told that the request was not necessarily based on need, rather that the Board of Supervisors historically has suggested that the school board come up with a rotation of six buses per year so that they don't come to us all at once needing 15 buses one year. It was further detailed that the vast majority of the buses have not been running, except for, my understanding is, those students who qualify for special services. I also specifically, in hopes of helping justify the need for six more buses, I asked if you had six more buses, six new buses, and you kept the six that theoretically you would be rotating out, would you have any more ability to get more students back in the classroom? Because then you can social distance more on these. You have more buses. You can, you know, get more students into the classroom. And the answer to that was not necessarily because the bigger problem is that we have a bus driver shortage. So I support my colleague's recommendation as well to strike the $312,000 for school buses.
Thank you. Dr. Young, with that, with that said is, I want the public to understand too that doing all that we've done with the CIP is really draining that fund balance. And by being able to put that back in, we're also helping support the replacement of the roof at King George Elementary School, which was not originally a recommendation that we approved, understanding that whether the school is open or not, we have to make sure the roof doesn't leak, and it's already had issues. So with that being said, if there's anybody from the public who would like to come up and speak on our CIP, please come up.
Mr. Bender?
Oh, sorry.
I just would like to bring up one point. Both the elementary school roof and the tennis courts were put on hold. And at the last, at the CIP meeting, we discussed the roof and said, we don't want to put it on hold. And that, that was approved in FY 2019, 2020. And, and obviously with COVID, we put it on hold to see where things stood. But that was approved by a previous board, actually. And so I would, it's still in an approved hold state for the tennis courts. Those dollars were from the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. I think we should move forth with that project as well.
The tennis courts?
Yes, ma'am. And remove from the hold state and put it as approved at, per the previous decision.
Place tag on that one?
$250,000.
So that would be covered by the, if we remove the bus?
Well, so we talked about this a little bit as well. And the reason those were put on hold was the concern about how much money was going to come into the, the fund balance from the landfill. And so to see how much we'd have. At least what I remember, it looked like there was enough dollars that were, ended up coming in to cover both those projects. And so we banked that money into the fund balance of our capital improvement projects. And so it was being safe, on the safe side, saying, hey, if this money doesn't come in, we don't want to cut into our savings. If the rest of the board says, well, hey, you know, we got this year and we want to hold off, you know, that's, that's perfectly acceptable as well. I was just saying, it was previously approved. Those funds did come in. I think we should honor what that previous board had approved and pushed forward with that project as well.
And I, I understand that, Mr. Granger, because if, for the general public that might not have been aware of our budget work session, the tennis courts, I've asked about the tennis courts because I remember when they were resurfaced. It wasn't that long ago. But they, they are in a state of disrepair. And for those of you that might have amended the old cinder track, there was a point that nobody would come to compete at King George. So people didn't have their senior night. They didn't have anything because the, the surface was unsafe for competition. And so from Mr. Clark, you can clarify or not, the tennis courts are not safe for competition at this time? Or just clarify that? According to the VHSL in the Battlefield District.
In 2019, King George High School did play their home matches on the courts. They did not have a spring tennis season in 2020. So I have not spoken to the tennis coach since then. The cracking has not changed much in that time, but it is there. We talked at the work session about reaching out to Rob Hanick Community College. I got the agreement they have with Richmond, with the town of Warsaw. I have information back from the county administrator of Richmond County and have not gotten with Rob Hanick Community College yet. We had a fire, a couple of big projects last week that I just haven't gotten that information. See if we can work with them about getting, possibly getting a grant to help us with that. But the sooner we can place those courts, the better. They are the only public tennis courts in King George County.
And a lot of the public does use it for their personal use, correct?
They do. We, and we have folks that I've even traveled from outside the county to play. I've met people from Colonial Beach on our courts.
You had some photos of the courts, I believe, where you had a quarter and some of the cracks were the size of the thickness of the, or the width of the quarter.
Absolutely. There are, there are actually a couple of cracks that where you actually set the quarter inside the crack and on other pieces of the asphalt that have fallen in.
And, and also you were going to also add pickleball lines and other things that is very popular with a lot of people.
Correct.
I like pickleball. But anyway, so those are, go ahead. Who would else like to speak on this one? Mr. Bush?
So are we going to hold the public hearing? Or are we debating out right now these two items?
Those are the two things. Now I was going to open up the public comment, and then we can come back and revisit. What does everybody feel about that?
Because I wanted to debate out the, the tennis court. Would that be appropriate after the public hearing?
Mr. Britton? Yes?
Yes. So this is a recommendation, the CIP, through, through the commission to you. So you let it go, and then you amend it as you see fit because you're really having a hearing on the recommendation of the CIP from the commission. That's the, the better way to do it.
All right. Is there, be okay, open to open it, finally get people to talk? All right. All right. Now, would anybody like to come and speak on this matter? That being said, Mr. Dines, is there any? Oh, sorry. Apologize. Took a minute to get.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Howard Thomas. I'm at 14354 Round Hill Road. Just a general observation as we're going through these things and spending money for the various items that are coming up. Earlier in the session, you had mentioned that we're expecting some very austere times coming. So I'm really having a little disconnect when we're ticking off item after item after item and reconciling that with the fact that we're not going, we're going to try not to raise taxes in spite of the fact that it's going to be an austere year. So for instance, tennis courts, I would say, sorry, we need to reserve funding for eventualities based on the fact that our revenue projections for the coming year, we don't know, and it doesn't look good. So help me, I'd really like to understand how we're crying poor on one hand and then spending all this money on these different projects on the other end. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come and talk up at the podium? I'll wait a couple of minutes if anybody would like to come. Mr. Dines, is there anyone online?
No, Madam Chair.
Does anybody, one of my colleagues have written correspondence?
No, ma'am.
All right, I will close public comment. Dr. Young, I would ask, maybe we can take off once again these so the, those in the public that are here might understand a little bit more. I really invite people, we have a YouTube channel, King George County Content, where all of our meetings, at least the Board of Supervisors, are on there, including our work sessions. So for those that can't always attend, you could actually watch those meetings and then be, understand a lot of this information we're already talking about. And I understand you might not have known about that, but it's called King George County Official Content. But I'll ask Dr. Young to go over and explain some of these items to the public, especially since we have a lot of people in our audience understand what these items are. Dr. Young?
Yes, Madam Chair. And I'm going to read where we currently stand as a result of current board discussion. Currently, the board is discussing the reconstruction of the tennis courts. That was approved in the fiscal year 2019 capital budget. It was put on hold with another large capital project where we started realizing that we were running into the pandemic and potential recession. We then had the school board, I'm sorry, the King George Elementary School roof replacement, which is approved in the fiscal year 19 capital budget. It was approved last year. And at the work session, the board decided, okay, it's approved, but we're going to move forward with that project. That's an amount of $1,260,480. We then have the administration, the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project. This project is a project that's working in partnership with FEMA to address the deterioration of the Fairview Beach water, erosion of the beach itself. The reason why the county is partnering with FEMA to address this beach is because that beach is the only thing that stands between the river and public water and utility lines. So if it roads a beach, and then it will erode the streets, our lines will be exposed and it'll cause an environmental hazard within the Potomac River. The cost of that project is $1 million, with the understanding that that's to pay, the county is paying that money upfront, with the understanding that the grant that was approved by FEMA will reimburse the county for any expenses that were made or incurred as a result of addressing the Riverbank Stabilization Project. We then have the approved contract. This would be year two of a three-year contract for proactive network information management that was approved in the fiscal year 19 capital budget. That is already an obligation that we have committed to. The purpose of this contract is, that's the project that allows for King George County to keep its network in a cloud system. So we're not continuing to rely on ground-based servers. This helps with cybersecurity. It helps with ensuring that we have information assurance and ensures that we are able to maintain modern technology in order to keep the county's records safe and the county is pressured to provide better services to the community. This project came at a cost of $117,104. The board is approving MuniCity software, a request by Community Development. This software will allow for the Community Development to be able to perform plan reviews online versus just in paper format. In addition, it will allow for the general public to access land records online versus having to come into the Community Development Department and continue to rely on paper. So this will put the Community Development Department in a posture to be able to conduct plan reviews faster, safer, and it'll be a more transparent process for the general public. The board has already approved the courthouse building. We have a bond for the courthouse at an amount of $23 million. The approval in this capital project reflects $1,400,000. This is to pay for the design of the courthouse, as was discussed in a previous action item, where we're going to do a construction manager at risk design process to go to move forward with building the courthouse. We then have, the board has approved year three of a five-year contract for the King George Sheriff's Office Microwave Radio System and Alarm System. This is an amount of $143,250. Again, it was approved in 2018, and we're now asking for the board to fund the third year of its commitment to this five-year contract in support of radio systems for the sheriff's office. And finally, we have an amount of $125,000, a fire rescue and emergency services request for $125,000. This $125,000 is going towards land acquisition for the buildout of Fire Station Number Two, which is in Dahlgren. As everybody's fully aware, the current station is no longer fit to run 24, was never built to run 24-hour operations. It's currently on Dahlgren Road. So whenever the fire trucks or ambulances had to come out onto the road, they had to fight traffic just to access the major thoroughfare to address emergencies. Therefore, adding more time to response times and potentially putting lives at risk. And Madam Chair, again, that brings the cost to $1,990,000. $1,990,885.
And Dr. Young, for one more clarification, the CIP funds come from the landfill revenue?
That's correct, Madam Chair. There's two major funds that the King George County government relies on, one being the general fund, which is tax-based, to include real estate tax, which is the biggest contributor to the general fund. And then we have the capital fund, which funds the capital improvement plan that we're discussing now. The capital fund is funded by landfill revenue. Basically, out-of-state trash that comes into the landfill when they use the dump, King George County gets a tipping fee. That tipping fee comes in the form of approximately $6.3 million, up to $7.5 million annually until we hit this recession. And we utilize that fund to pay our debt service and to fund our capital projects in King George County.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So going back to what I was discussing earlier, the gentleman that gave public comment is absolutely right. We are facing a recession. The revenues from the landfill, we're going to have a shortfall. But even before this recession is taking place, the majority of our landfill revenues are leveraged against our debt service. I'm very happy with the bond that we got for the courthouse. That was very well engineered. The interest rate that we got for that was actually a percent better or a percent less than what our best-case scenario was for us. So ultimately, over the life of that loan, we're saving the taxpayer money by being responsible and planning that out. With that, to Mr. Granger's point with the tennis courts, I can appreciate where he's coming from on that. And I hate to be the guy that's beating up on the schools by taking away three more school buses from them. They're the ones that utilized the tennis court the most. But again, schools aren't being open. I know they're looking at athletics right now. And I agree, our kids need something to do, but that's not the priority. When I'm looking at a tennis court that is nice to have versus I don't know what the hell's going to happen six months from now, a year from now, with the revenues of the landfill, they're telling how long this governor's going to keep us where we're at. We don't know what our picture's going to be a year from now. I think that $312,000 is best served in our fund balance. So I would, I guess I'm the cut guy, but I'd still like to cut the three school buses and leave the tennis courts out. Now, what we did do at our last work session by adding in the roof for King George Elementary, we had to do that. That's an infrastructure issue, and it's only going to deteriorate. So I mean, you can look at it, if you take a holistic view of it, $1.2 million for a roof, we had no funding set aside for it. But now the $624,000 that we allocated for six buses, now half the roof is paid for by taking something that we don't need right now to address something that we do. So I think we're doing our due diligence financially. But I believe that $312,000 is best served the county sitting in our fund balance.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Cupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I note that Mr. Clark, our Director of Parks and Recreation, is still here. Would you be able to return to the podium and advise us how many programs you offer during the summer or spring or fall or whenever, obviously probably not winter? Do you offer tennis programs? And if so, how many? And how many people might this affect if we decided to put this off for a little while, please?
We do offer tennis. We do Pee-wee camps. This past summer, we were unable to hold them due to the pandemic. So I have, going back through the one summer of experience that we had, I can't quote an exact number of participants we had, but we do little ones who play what they call Quick Start. We used to call it Quick Start. Now they call it Ten and Under Tennis, where you actually divide the courts in half and you play across them. And then moving up to the older kids, we had, we attempted to do a youth league last fall. Didn't have as many takers as we would have liked, but we're trying to work and expand the tennis community. A lot of it is folks do come to those courts, and they look and they go, there's cracking all over these courts. When I laid, I actually added pickleball courts to two of the courts. There are only two half courts of the six courts where there are no cracks. And I could lay a pickleball court out safely. So there are on two of the half courts, we have a net that you can, nets that you can come and get from us that Parks and Rec can borrow to play. But every single half court has, some, most of them cracks all the way across the surface, which ranges anywhere from a quarter inch to the size of a quarter in width. So it could be a trip hazard. Unfortunately, the repairs that were done, where they were filled a few years ago, just didn't stick. That land has continued to settle. And the recommendation we have from the contractor that we brought out almost a year and a half ago to look at was to start again afresh. And that's where we got to the quarter million dollar price.
Thank you. And I know when we had this discussion at the work session, I brought forward to you a possible grant opportunity. So you will continue to pursue that and others? Thank you.
Mr. Stonehill?
I'm kind of torn with the, I mean, the school buses, I think, obviously, we just, like we said, they just need to be moved. But, Mr. Granger, did you say that was approved before in the last board?
The tennis courts and the roof were approved in the fiscal year 2019, 2020 CIP process when COVID hit and tipping fee, tipping landfill ingress decreased. There was a concern about a gap in the funds, the projected funds. And so those were put on hold, is my understanding. Dr. Young, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. And I agree with that decision. But at the end of that fiscal year, which would have been June 30th, 2020, this past June 30th, the funds did seem, what I remember seeing, looked like the funds for both the, enough funds came in to cover the cost of the elementary school replacement and the tennis courts in order to fulfill that previous approval by the previous board. And as I said, I can appreciate what Mr. Bush is saying and Mr. Thomas out there as well. We do have austere times. I was just making the case, it had already been approved. And so I leave it to you. If you would like to keep it off, you know, I can appreciate that perspective as well. And I'm not going to say it's a wrong answer necessarily.
Dr. Young, the funds did come in the previous year to cover those?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The capital fund is funded not like the general fund because it's funded via calendar year because that's how ways management, they operate on a calendar year versus a fiscal year. So the funding closed out in December 2019. And we were able to realize those monies. And the board that approved the tennis courts did base that approval off of the assessment of the monies that were received in 2019. So Mr. Granger is absolutely correct that we did have the funding. We do have the funding. And that was realized in 2019 to pay for the courthouse. I'm sorry, to pay for, to move forward with the tennis courts that the board has moved.
Mr. Stonehill, do you have any further questions?
Not questions, not, not questions, but save my opinion for later.
Mr. Granger?
I don't have any else to share. I feel like I made my point. I appreciate Mr. Bush and Mr. Thomas's perspectives. I don't think they're wrong. I was just saying, it had been approved. It was put on hold, but the monies were realized. That was my motivation for saying, I think we should move forward with it. But the rest of the board, or there's a majority of the board that wants to hold off. That's the prerogative of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Bush?
So I can appreciate what Mr. Granger had brought up. But I would compare this to, I had money saved up because I wanted to build a nice back deck at my house. Money's there, been saving up. But I found out my daughter wants to get married now, six months from now. So that money, I can't utilize to build that. Now I've got to save that because I have to pay for a wedding. Same scenario here. We had the money allocated last year. We intended to do the courthouse, but then COVID hit, and we still don't know what's going on. We might have to use that money to pay for something else. And that's my point why I think that the $312,000 is best served in the fund balance. So with that, I do have a question. Are we at the point to where a motion could be made to approve the capital budget as presented since we concluded the public hearing?
Yes. I have a question, though, before that.
Okay.
Dr. Young, I know I have brought up the fact with the schools' facilities maintenance agreements and making sure they're properly maintained on a yearly basis. Can we put, and I asked Mr. Britton and yourself this question early, can we put as part of the approval of the roof that they have to have a maintenance plan for it? Or is that not allowed?
I spoke with Matt about that. And I think that he says that we, didn't he say that we couldn't force, if we were going to appropriate those monies for the school board, we couldn't force them or put a contingency on the use of those funds. We can only state that, hey, this is approved for this specific purpose, but we couldn't put a contingency on. However, we're going to dangle this approval of the use of this money on if you agree to put a maintenance contract on the roof. So since it's its own separate political body, I don't think that we can make that contingency. However, Matt did tell me, and I agree, that there is some comfort in the fact that those roofs will come with a pretty extensive warranty. So with that warranty in place and with a conversation that I'm happy to have with school superintendent, I think that they could take a real serious look at putting together a plan to maintain that roof long into the future.
Thank you. I know I mentioned that to Dr. Benson during the work session, that we need to have a planning process of when these big-ticket items are going to hit us so that we can plan. If we know a roof is going to be, have to be replaced in 10 years, 15 years, we can plan for that in our CIP. And that hasn't been done before, and we need to do that. Mr. Bush?
So I have a question about something that transpired with the school board since you brought this up, that we can't specify what things are spent on. So we approved the school board budget. The school board then turned around, I believe it was their last meeting or meeting before, no, it was Friday. They had a special meeting. They approved a three-quarter of a million-dollar project with Honeywell for these air filtration systems that, I think they rushed into it. I don't think they know what they're getting. I think they had somebody they, they had somebody sell them a product that could sell ice to an Eskimo. But it was mentioned by the superintendent that any shortfall in the CARES Act funding that they were utilizing for this Honeywell project, that they could tap into their operational fund. My question is, when we approve the school board's budget, did we do it by category? And if we did approve their budget by category, can they really go into their operational fund? And I bring this up because we got a lot of grief with the school board budget that we approved this year. And a letter goes out from the schools telling teachers that they're not getting their step increases. And basically, I got a lot of hate email saying, I didn't even get my step increase because you cut our budget. But now we have the superintendent saying that they can go into their operational budget to pay for this Honeywell whacked out system that they're paying for overtime for, for the people to install this. It's just crazy. But that's their decision, their CARES Act funding. But the operational fund, local funds are utilized for that. If we approve that by category, can they do that?
I want to make two, two statements. I didn't, I didn't say that we couldn't, or the board couldn't purpose the money. I stated that with, in discussions with Matt, the board couldn't have a contingency on approval. The board, if the board was going to make that purpose, you all, of course, just like you said, by category can say, hey, this specific amount of money is going to go to the specific purpose, but you couldn't vote. But however, we won't give you the money unless you do a maintenance program. That's the contingency.
That's exactly right. The difference there, it's, you know, a very fine line. But the product, the budget was for the roof, which comes with a warranty, right? The service agreement is a separate thing that you buy or don't buy. So, you could, you could budget the money differently. And you could say, let's say it's a hundred dollars. You could say, we'll give you $80 for a roof and warranty, and then we'll give you $20 for a service program for the roof. But it's similar to what we were talking about in the CARES Act funding where you're buying phones or hotspots. There, you're only allowed to buy a, a plan up through January at the latest, but it's supposed to be December 31st, 2020.
All right. And maybe, maybe this wasn't the appropriate time to ask this question. I'm not, it doesn't have anything to do with this, say, per se. It's just, it triggered a thought. If they're going into their operational budget to pay for something, because CARES Act funding isn't going to cover this whole thing. They're funny. So, it made me think and maybe now wasn't the appropriate time. I can revisit it a later time. But for them to say that they're going to go into their operational budget to make up the difference, that operational budget that they have was approved by category, I believe.
That's correct, sir.
And that's what I would like to look into the legitimacy of that statement. And can they really go into their operational budget? So, I will, I will not go any further with this, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve the CI budget as presented with the limit to strike 312,000 dollars from the school bus replacement program.
Do I have a second? Calling again, do I have a second?
Mr. Stonehill, I know you said you're going to hold off on making a decision about the tennis courts. About to try to push you. I'm in favor of the tennis courts, but if you're against it, then I would recommend you make a, a second on this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays?
May.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. Next up is a public hearing number two. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding case number 20-09-Z04 zoning ordinance text amendment to permit the use of battery energy storage facility as a use permitted by right in the industrial district amendments to sections 1.9 and 2.1, 2.2, and article four. I will first ask the staff for the report, and then I will open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during the public comment. Where is yours?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Louis Fancotti, planner, and I will be presenting case number 20-09-CO4 zoning ordinance text amendment to permit the use of battery energy storage facility as a use permitted by right in the industrial district I amendments to sections 1.9, 2.12.2, and article four. Next slide, please. Battery energy storage facilities store electrical energy that can be used for short periods of time to reduce peak power demand and lessen the likelihood of power outages. Currently, the King George County zoning ordinance does not permit this use in any zoning district. This proposed amendment would add battery energy storage as a by right use in the I industrial zoning district. This amendment will also define the term and add supplemental regulations in article four related to this use. Next slide, please. Here are a couple of examples to give you a better idea of what these facilities look like. On the left is the Beacon Energy Storage System and the Beacon Solar Plant located in the, in California. And on the right is a 20 megawatt energy storage system located in McHenry County, Illinois. Next slide, please. Section 1.9 will be amended to define battery energy storage facility as one or more battery energy storage systems assembled together capable of storing energy in order to supply electrical energy at a future time, but not to include standalone 12-car, 12-o car battery or electric motor vehicle or consumer products. This use will be added to section 2.12 as a by right use in the industrial I zoning district. Next slide. This map shows the parcels that are currently zoned industrial where this use would be permitted by right. Next slide, please. Section 4.19 will be amended to include additional requirements for battery energy storage facilities. A, public water or existing commercial well and fire hydrants must be available to the property. B, facilities shall not be visible from any adjacent street, use, or building. C, access to the property for King George County Fire Rescue and Emergency Services shall be provided in a mannerable, acceptable to KGC FRES, and approved Knox Box must be available for fire department access. NFPA 704 placards shall be placed on building entrances along with emergency contact information. Next slide. E, site plans for battery energy storage facilities shall be accompanied by a decommissioning plan to be implemented upon abandonment and/or in conjunction with the removal of the facility to be approved by the Department of Community Development. The decommissioning plan shall include at minimum the following. A narrative description of the activities to be accomplished including who will perform that activity and at what point in time for complete physical removal of all battery energy storage system components, structures, equipment, security barriers, and transmissible lines from the site. The estimated decommissioning costs and how said estimate was determined. This estimate shall be reevaluated every five years. A letter of credit or bond based on this cost estimate shall be provided before or prior to final approval. The manner in which the site will be restored, including description of how any changes to the surrounding area or other systems adjacent to the battery storage, battery energy storage system such as, but not limited to, structural elements, building penetrations, means of egress, and required fire detection suppression systems will be protected during the decommissioning and confirmed as being acceptable after the facility is removed. A description of mediation procedures for the release of hazardous materials or other emergency events during the decommissioning process shall also be included. Next slide. F, site plans for battery energy storage facilities shall be accompanied by an emergency plan that at minimum contains the following. One, procedures for safe shutdown, deenergizing and/or isolation of equipment and systems under emergency conditions to reduce the risk of fire, electric shock, release of hazardous materials, and personal injuries, and for safe startup following succession of emergency conditions. Procedures for inspection and testing associated with alarms, interlocks, and controls. Procedures to be followed in response to notifications from the battery energy storage facility management system when provided that could signify potentially dangerous conditions, including shutting down equipment, summoning service and repair personnel, and providing agreed upon notification to the fire department personnel for potentially hazardous condition in the event of a system failure. Emergency procedures to be followed in case of fire explosion, release of liquids or vapors, damage to critical moving parts, or other potentially dangerous conditions. Procedures can include sounding the alarm, notifying the fire department, evacuating personnel, deenergizing equipment, and controlling and extinguishing the fire. And five, procedures and schedules for conducting drills of these procedures and for training local first responders on the contents of the plan and appropriate response procedures. Next slide, please. At the October 13th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously to forward case number 20-09-CO4 to the board with a recommendation for approval. Therefore, the King George County staff and the Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve case number 20-09-CO4.
Thank you for that long read. For this one, I'm going to open up to the floor for public comment. And then I know Louis will be back. I have quite a few questions for you on, on this. So, is there anyone in sitting in the audience who would like to come up and give public comment on this particular item, battery storage? Ms. Dodge?
I, I don't know. What I'm going to say, I don't know if they have to do the battery because of the solar farm in industrial park. But I want to make clear, the second solar farm is going to be put behind Hoppyard. And they're already asking Hoppyard residents if we want, they want our whole development to agree that we're going to get our power from that. And that was my complaint about having the solar farm. And then if, you have to put in all this battery stuff too, because I'm assuming that, that battery is for the industrial park solar, solar park and not the one that's going to be behind Hoppyard. And I resent as being a Hoppyard resident, I didn't want the solar farm to be approved there. And now they're asking me that I have to get electricity from the solar farm. We don't know how much that's going to cost and anything else. I want to get my power from the electric grid, from coal power plants and from gas power plants and that aren't in my backyard. And then we also have propane too. We do, we have two kinds. But anyway, they're going to build all that behind Port Conway and that picture there, if that, if that's the way they store it, that looks awful. And I don't really want that behind in that rural area back there on the farms. I don't know if that's the battery going with the solar plants or not. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak on battery storage?
I do have one question regarding the item about restricting the visibility. Did it not be visible from a street or surrounding area? I kind of questioned that the first time it was brought up and was wondering why, why that would be in place, given that, especially with some of the examples that he showed in the pictures, you know, wide out in, in the open. So, if we're, if we're going to have something like that, it doesn't seem like it's any more onerous than some of the other industrial complexes that we have. I was just wondering why.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold the floor open for a few more minutes if anybody would like to come up. Mr. Dines, is there anyone online concerning this matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Do we have any correspondents, members of the board? All right. With that being said, I will close public comment. And Louis, can you come back up to the podium? And I'll open it up to my colleagues to ask questions on this. I'll start down the line now. Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am. To Mrs. Dodge's questions about the, the battery energy storage, I know when we had the OGNEX come and discuss their plans, I know this is, sounds, it's like a tangent, but I have reason to go for it. But when they came and discussed their plans for the, the golf course, they talked about the gun range being an ancillary use. Would the battery energy storage associated with a solar plant be an ancillary use, which would just be allowed as part of a solar project?
With this tax amendment, it would be allowed standalone?
Yes.
I haven't, we haven't had a, typically those sort of determinations come through a zoning administrator determination. And whether that is an accessory to a solar farm that has not been determined by the zoning administrator.
Okay. And I recognize that this was for a standalone battery, not to be necessarily associated within any other project. I was just trying to come to the point where Ms. Dodge was saying. I was wondering, I was wondering if it was already allowed as an, as we said, an accessory use. So, because I know this, this text amendment isn't necessarily for that solar projects she's speaking to.
I, again, that hasn't necessarily been determined by the zoning administrator. But they are typically found with.
Solar plants.
Well, not necessarily solar. Even with wind, I found in my research, they're also associated with other energy generators.
And Mr. Granger, if I, if I may ask her?
Yes, sir.
So, I know that there's been a lot of questions concerning Port Conway solar farm. A couple of things. So, Port Conway solar farm was being put in the special exception permit on agriculture, agriculturally zoned land. This tax amendment is being asked to be approved for industrial land. So, any concern about this battery storage, energy storage being placed behind residential homes in, off of Hoppyard is, it couldn't be approved because that's not what this tax, tax amendment addresses. So, I think that, I would hope that that would put away some concerns regarding that potential. And then regarding solar farms and electricity, solar farms don't sell electricity directly to customers. They sell the power to the power grid.
Yes.
So, there wouldn't be, and I know that's a little bit outside of discussion, but that wouldn't be a forcing function for neighboring residents to actually be forced onto an electrical grid formed by a solar farm that they're not a customer-based entity. They, they sell to the power grid. So, maybe, maybe that would address any concerns regarding the ancillary use. Right now, what we're seeing for economic development projects coming down the pipeline, I'm sure Nick could be happy to talk to you about it, is requests are coming, coming across his bow in the King George County Economic Development Department are standalone projects where these projects are pursuing energy use as its primary purpose and not ancillary uses to solar farms. And Nick, if you just wanted to probably talk about some of the projects that you're seeing or phone calls that you have been receiving?
Thank you, sir. Yes. So, I've actively working three prospects that's interested in this tax amendment. The industry really range from solar to data centers to just energy storage by itself. So, this is also in response to a Dominion RFP where they're requesting 1,000 megawatts of solar development and in conjunction with that, 250 megawatts of battery storage. So, for us, we're sort of getting out ahead of the curve, whether it's in response to the Dominion RFP or whether it's just in response to the industry in general. I don't know of any other locality that's really looked at this type of use for this where it's just standalone, where it's just only battery storage, not in conjunction with another use. However, with this, with this additional tax amendment added to the ordinance that we have now, it makes us more competitive in those other industries, whether it's solar or if it's just battery storage or if it's data centers. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, personally, I'm not interested in the solar farm aspect of this. Okay? But you just mentioned data centers, which I believe would contribute economically to the county. So, would, would they require these, these battery units to have a data center in our industrial park?
The short answer is yes, sir. But what, what we currently, what we are currently looking at now, as far as the prospects that I'm looking at, they are looking at it. that I'm looking at, they are looking at it as they can be a stand, they'll have a standalone energy producer in solar, they'll store it on the battery storage side of it, and then the data center will operate there. So they're looking at an off-grid development is what, is what, is what we're trying to essentially accomplish. Now, this is all just a proposal, or it's just a concept, but this is, but this is the type of prospects that we're looking at, or these are the types of projects that we're trying to compete on.
But the amendment has to be done to the ordinance to allow to, to facilitate that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So this is getting ahead of the curve.
What I, what I wanted to make sure is, kind of to what Mr. Granger touched on, by us making this a by right in the industrial park, okay? This isn't also saying that solar farms are by right in the industrial park.
They're, they're already by right in the industrial park for solar farms.
They are.
For industrial zoning, they are already by right. Agricultural is by special exception.
Thank you for that clarity.
And so just to expand on that, it doesn't make a lot of sense for a solar company to put solar panels on industrial zoning because the taxes are high, right? The purchase of that property is higher. Agricultural makes more sense for them. However, it doesn't stop them from doing so.
They also have a lot of tax exemptions, and they're heavily subsidized too. That's why I'm not a fan of, of the solar farm per se. I'm just, in your opinion, as our Economic Development Director, does this enhance the county's overall posture for economic development?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Granger, did you have any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Stonehill?
Do they do any, I'm just looking at the pictures that you all put up there about, you know, the 20 mags and stuff. Is there any kind of limitation about how big of these, of the system? I'm just looking at the sizes of them.
So I can't answer that question with accuracy. It is a new technology, it is a new industry by itself. So I believe the state is still trying to figure out what the megawattage they can allow on in one site or in one locality, or how they're going, however they're going to handle it, sir. But there are concepts where it is under a building, or it is under a shell building.
Ms. Cupka, did you have a text?
Yeah, I got, I got.
I can answer your question. I'll answer it when you're finished.
I'm just looking at the definitions of terms and stuff. Maybe Ms. Hall can help on this one as well. What about like folks with solars on their, solar panels on their house, and they have to do like a Tesla wall to store that energy? I'm just looking at it, and it says does not include, you know, a single 12-volt battery.
So solar panels for a residential home is considered an accessory use, much like we currently allow that in, in our ordinance. Many homes already have solar panels on their homes. This would not affect that.
Okay, that's it. Ms. Cupka can answer my question then?
So your question about the size or the mega wattage, whatever, one of the things that I did learn from the VACO virtual conference last week, when we had the economic development breakout session, as I said in my board report, there was a lot of information about battery storage in there. And in fact, the State Corporation Commission of Virginia does in fact have draft regulations governing the deployment of energy storage. So, and it's a 20-page document. If anyone wants to take a look at it, it's available online, scc.virginia.gov. So it appears as though there is an intention for this to be highly regulated by the state as well.
And Ms. Cupka, coming off of that, Sussex County in Virginia already has approved this kind of facility, and they're sort of the model. Mr. Stonehill can do?
I had a couple other things. So a few of the other points that were made during that breakout session were that you need a decommissioning review or plan when you develop this kind of ordinance. And I would note, and I lost my place, sorry, that, that that is included here in the ordinance. You need specialized training for fire departments, and that is included in here. Procedures and schedules for conducting drills of these procedures and for training local first responders on the contents of the plan and appropriate response procedures. May I assume, is the fire chief here today, tonight?
I saw Chief Moody here earlier.
Would you mind coming down, sir? Thank you very much.
And I know I've asked you this question. Thank you for coming down.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, chief. So have you been, and has your department been consulted in the development of this ordinance?
We have, we actually have worked very closely with community development in Lewis, and so a lot of the language that you read in there is because we've already had that coordination with them.
And thank you. Do you have a pre-fire emergency action plan? It looks to me like you do in here somewhere. And that's part of the emergency procedures to be followed in case of fire explosion, release of liquids or vapors, damage to critical moving parts, or other potentially dangerous conditions. Yes?
That's correct.
So do you have that plan now, or you will, if this ordinance is adopted, you will be prepared to move forward with that?
Yes, the second part. We would if, once the, so this would just be the, their legal way to certainly build. I'd assume that they would probably go through building permits, site plan reviews. We would be pulled in at that time. We would work with the, with the developer, the, the company that would be coming on board, and then that plan would then be created. So, so, you know, depending on what type of batteries, there's typically five types of stored cell batteries. These are popping up all across the country, primarily because of renewable energy sources. But we would work specifically with what the target hazard would be, and then, you know, put the emergency plan in relation to what the target hazard would.
Very good. Thank you. I'm satisfied.
All right, Mr. Bush? You good? I know, Chief Moody, we've had discussions about this. I'm on a subcommittee of the VACO committee, is Energy Subcommittee, where they talk about renewable energy. And the last meeting that I attended, they made a point with Governor Northam's push for carbon-free by 2050. And this, I had to ask the question to clarify, to make sure this was right. But they believe that the government for solar or wind battery storage will have to acquire 10,000 acres a year to be able to come to that goal of energy carbon-free by 2050. So as you point, Mr. Minor pointed out, these are going to be popping up all over the state. And why I bring that up is I have a big concern, and I've heard from Mr. Crozier, who's one of the supervisors in Orange County, that they regret some of their decisions by putting in solar farms and things like that because of, and I'm a big stickler, and Mr. Minor and I disagree over this, is on solar farms is what it does to the land that's agriculture. Industrial land, it's already brown land, is the term they use in the, in the environmental community. So you're just keeping it the way it is, brown land. But agricultural land, they're, the solar farms haven't been around long enough to really understand their impact. And there are studies from Europe and Germany and in the United States that there possibly is a, a way that it turns this greenland, it can't be brought back to agriculture. It will be permanently brown. Some people like that because then, hey, it's more industrial land. I particularly don't. And there's also concern of the runoff into the waterways, and there hasn't just, it hasn't been around long enough to study that. But I did ask Mr. Minor, and I talked to Mr. Britton, I talked to Dr. Young, it would be just, from my understanding, Mr. Minor, you can clarify, it's only in the industrial park, correct? For this ordinance, it doesn't go on to agricultural.
That's correct. Industrial only.
I just wanted to clarify that. And then, Chief Moody, why I kept you up here is, we talked at length about the different kinds of batteries, and your concern that it's not like a normal fire. When it catches on fire, it might burn for a very long time. And so you're okay with that, the way this is, if somebody comes in, you'll have a very deep conversation with them about, you know, what kind of plan we need based on the batteries?
That's correct. I mean, there's certainly a risk that comes with these. If you, you know, as long as you try to mitigate that risk and you, with planning and emergency evacuation and emergency preparedness plans. One of the things with this too is that they would be required to report and also to help develop that emergency action plan, as they would fall under the community right-to-know standards and also working with our local emergency planning committee. So, and Supervisor Stonehill's on it, Supervisor Bush used to be on the, on the LEPC. So certainly, we would work closely with them to help try to mitigate and prevent as much, you know, any kind of potential hazards. So there have been some accidents throughout the country, but for the vast majority, they're, they're a pretty, you know, safe-type system. So there is some national, NPA has a, a national industry standard on the insulation and fire protection model for these types of systems. Like I said, they're becoming more commonplace throughout the country.
I'm still not a big fan, but I understand this is the wave of the future, especially with our current governor administration, that this, this is a big push. And so it seems like that's, you know, at least on industrial land, but I still have it on agriculture. I'm not a big fan of that. But thank you for answering the question.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any concerns or would like to make a motion?
I move to approve case number 20-09-Zebra04, zoning ordinance tax amendment to permit the use of battery energy storage facility as a use permitted by right in the industrial district. Aye. Amendments to sections 1.9 and 2.12.2, and Article 4 as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any needs? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I apologize, I know we have one more public hearing. I was going to ask if we could take a five-minute recess. I bought a little more coffee, I probably should have, and I could use a quick break.
I was gonna, I was gonna make that recommendation. I just have one consideration in our break time, understanding that we do have a hard break at midnight that we consider that we'll be waived and allowed to go over the midnight deadline so that we can resolve the last public hearing. So just think about that in our five-minute recess.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Or you think five or 10 would be good?
I'll leave it to you. I'm fine with five, though.
Five minutes? Okay, so we will take, do we have to make a motion on that, Mr. Britton? To make, okay. So we will take a five-minute recess. We are adjourned for five minutes. We are adjourned for five minutes. Dr. Young, understanding that we have by our bylaws a hard stop at midnight. Dr. Young, I've asked if you could give a recommendation for that and about our last part of the board packet, agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair. According to section three of the rules and procedures of the Board of Supervisors of King George County, no business of the King George County Board of Supervisors will be conducted after midnight unless there is a vote of four fifths of the board to approve the waiver of that hard stop. So I'd recommend that the Board of Supervisors vote to waive the restriction that no business of the King George County Board of Supervisors be conducted after midnight.
Sub moved. You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? Ms. Cupco abstains. I vote, oh, did I do that wrong? You're not part of it. That's right. Apologize. Apologize. This is different time and. That was correct, right? Mr. Burton?
Yes, Madam Chair. She's disqualified herself.
Disqualified, all right. Apologize for that. Thank you for clarification. So we have four votes aye and that's it. Four zero.
Madam Chair, one more recommendation. I recommend that the board amend the agenda to remove the closed session from tonight's agenda.
Sub moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All four, all those in favor, four of us voting?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bush?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion carries now. Public hearing number three. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding case number 1903Z02, request by Darryl Hertenstein, Hertenstein Investment Group on behalf of Beverly C. Coats, David F. Clair, and Alice Jeter Jones Villages at King George Crossroads to rezone with proffers tax map 33 parcel 74 and tax map 33 parcels 78 and 79 from rural agriculture A2 to general trade C2, total 17.65 acres and multifamily dwelling district R3, total 92.67 acres. I will first ask for the staff report and then I will open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. Mr. Downs, will you cue me up, please? Villages at King George Crossroads, case number 1903Z02, rezone 17.65 acres from A2 to C2 and 92.67 acres from A2 to R3, tax map 33 parcel 74, 78, and 79. Next slide. Chairman Bender was so kind to read this very long paragraph, so I will not repeat it again. Next slide. As you are aware, we have heard this, this project quite a few times over the past several months. This presentation and staff report will only discuss the most recent application updates. Next slide. June 16, 2020, the King George County Board of Supervisors held a public hearing regarding this case. After much discussion with applicant Mr. Brown with Mary Washington Hospital, Board of Supervisors regarding the proffer statement 3A, applicant currently has a contract with Mary Washington Healthcare, whereby Mary Washington has agreed to build up to 14,300 square foot medical facility on Land Bay A. The Board of Supervisors made a motion to remand the project back to the Planning Commission to evaluate the developer's proposal with changes made to address concerns raised by Mr. Granger, seconded by Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Cupco read a statement recusing herself from the discussion invoked. Next slide. October 13, 2020, the King George County Planning Commission held a second public hearing after the Board of Supervisors remanded the project back to them. After review and much discussion regarding their revised proffers, Chairman Parker called for a motion. Vice Chairman De Vries motioned to forward the case 1903Z02 with a recommendation for approval, seconded by Mr. Colwell, and deemed as a tie vote to failure of 550. Next slide. This is the cover page of the GDP. Next slide. So the continuing conditions, as you can see, the property does connect from 3 to 301. Next slide. The proposal of 150 townhomes, 200 apartments, 48 age-restricted villas, and 52 age-restricted apartments for a total of 450 homes. The commercial aspect is along the Route 3 side on this page as well as the top left-hand corner is the proposed medical facility. There's also a clubhouse and tat-lot on this side. Next slide. This does show the connection completing over to Route 301 with the commercial along the front and the continuation of the 200 apartments. Next slide. Now, this is again the summary of Land Bay A, Land Bay B, Land Bay C, and Land Bay D. Next slide. March 2020, during a teleconference was held when the King George County, Mr. Hertenstein, Brian Jenkins, Vice President of Corporate Counsel Properties, Mary Washington Healthcare, at that time, both applicant Mary Washington Healthcare advised that there was no contract between the applicant and Mary Washington regarding the villages. While Mary Washington applicant indicated that they were negotiating a potential contract to date that county had not received during that 2020 statement, the section 3A proffer statement stated that such a contract is in place and that there was information presented to staff in the Planning Commission. May 29, 2020, the real estate transfer agreement between Hertenstein Investment Group and Medical properties was provided. August 17, 2020, an amendment to the real estate transfer agreement was received by Community Development. Next slide. October 1, 2020, revised signed proffers were received by Community Development dated March 22, 2019, and revised August 21, 2020. The major revisions include proffer 3A, development of commercial parcels, and 4B residential uses. 3A, development of commercial parcels, West Village, Land Bay A. Land Bay A, as shown on the GDP, shall be developed under the C2 zoning regulations as a medical slash dental office or hospital, and no other use or purpose which may be, which may include an urgent care facility and medical laboratory facility here and after a medical facility. Applicants shall build or cause to be built a medical facility suitable to serve the general medical needs of the residents of the county on Land Bay A, not less than 10,000 square feet and not more than 14,300 square feet. On or before the date, that is five years after approval of the first site plan to be approved with respect to any portion or section of the property. For information purposes, applicant currently has a land transfer agreement in place with Mary Washington Healthcare, whereby the applicant has agreed to donate the property in $500,000 to Mary Washington in order to induce Mary Washington to build the for said medical facility. Next slide. Another amendment to the proffer included 4B residential uses. Updated language for consistency in the current year. This goes through residential uses as any residential dwelling units constructed on the property shall be constructed in accordance with the design guide as the same may be amended or waived by the zoning administrator. The county shall be required to issue more than, shall not be required to issue more than 75 occupancy permits for residential dwelling units in Land Bay C during the year in which the rezoning is approved. The county shall not be required to issue more than 50 occupancy permits for residential dwelling units in Land Bay C every year thereafter until the unit cap is reached as outlined in 4A. The number of unused occupancy permits in any given year may be carried over into subsequent years such that no more than 75 occupancy permits are permitted in the first year and 50 year thereafter. Until the cap is reached and outlined in 4A, for the avoidance of doubt, this is, if this application is approved in October 2020 and the construction of the property does not begin until 2022, the applicant would be permitted to apply for 175 occupancy permits in 2021, 75 from 2020, 50 from 2021, and 50 from 2022, assuming all other requirements have been met, including water and sewer connections. It would not be permitted to apply for more than 175 occupancy permits. Next slide. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein upon construction of a new Perkins Corner wastewater treatment plant to expand its capacity and level of service, or in the event the Service Authority elects not to build a new wastewater to Hoppyard Farm wastewater treatment plant, then in either, even the phasing schedule shall be deemed amended to allow for issuance of not more than 100 occupancy permits per year. Next slide. November 12, 2020, the department received a proposed draft of amended proffers to include the following. King George Sheriff's Office. Applicants shall make a cash payment to the county in the amount of $1,000 for each residential unit constructed on the property for the purposes of offsetting the impact this project will have on the services provided by King George County Sheriff's Office. Such payment shall be made at the time of occupancy permit approval for each unit. And we did receive the signed updated proffer on November 16, 2020. Next slide. The applicant did include additional documents that were after the staff report, which included the development portfolio 2020 of Hertenstein Investment Group LLC, received on November 16, 2020, a letter from F&amp;M Bank, including irrevocable standby letter of credit beneficiary of King George County Service Authority for $3 million, received November 17, 2020. Next slide. A second amendment to the transfer agreement dated 9/24/2020, received November 17, 2020, states that if the development of Mary Washington Hospital property has not commenced within four years from the date of said deed's execution, then the Mary Washington Hospital property shall revert to the Hertenstein Investment Group LLC or its designee. This also includes remaining cash donation and work product related to the property. Next slide. The, I believe the last addition was the Parrish Need Franklin Simpson PLC escrow letter dated 11/12/2020, received 11/17/2020. The firm has received $250,000 wire transfer, sorry, $250,000 wire transfer. The funds have been placed in the firm's trust account for the first payment due of the King George County Service Authority. Next slide. Community Development staff recommend the King George County Board of Supervisors approve rezoning application case number 1903Z02. As noted, the Planning Commission had made a motion with a recommendation for approval which failed by 55 votes. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I know we have a lot of questions and I know have the applicant be able to come up and speak. But what does the board feel about Mr. Burton to have the public comment first or the applicant can go first? And I'm applicant, okay, thank you. Just want to clarify. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Downs, will you bring up Mr. Davis's presentation, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name's Landon Davis. I represent the Hertenstein Investment Group and we really appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and present this project. This project has been in the works for the last two and a half years or more. It's been scrutinized extensively by the staff, by two separate counties attorneys, by the citizens of King George at, you know, several numerous public hearings, by the members of the Planning Commission on four or five different occasions and on several occasions by you, the board. And while this process has been difficult and somewhat adversarial at times, I think the application before you tonight is, is proof that this process works. What we have before you today is an application that my client and I and the rest of our team are very proud of. And it's very different from the application that you saw for the first time in October of 2019. It still has, maintains a lot of the things that were good about that application. However, it's been polished and it's been refined and it's been added to. Gaps have been filled. Words have been changed, you know, loopholes have been closed. And what you have before you today is just, I feel like a really solid, good application. It aligns, this project aligns perfectly with your comprehensive plan. It has a positive net impact on the county's fiscal bottom line. It offsets impacts to law enforcement, fire and rescue, and schools. It will incentivize and will guarantee the construction of a much-needed medical facility on the project's property. And it provides much-needed cash flow to the Service Authority at a time that it, that it really needs it. So Ms. Hall has done an excellent job and I know everyone's somewhat familiar with this project. So I'm going to try to be relatively brief, given the time and everything. But I did want to start, next slide, please, by introducing, which is something we haven't done before, introducing just the core group of people who's on this development team. And I'll start with the guy that I think everybody knows best, which is Darryl Hertenstein, Mr. Hertenstein. And just kind of go over a little bit of his background. Darryl is a longtime member of the King George community. He has several children in the schools. He's very active in the community and runs multiple businesses, including the Cameron Hills Driving Range, which is a, you know, reuse of the, reuse of the Cameron Hills property, which was a great preservation of a great recreational assets for the community. He's also developing some residential lots out there, estate lots from 10 to 40 acres and already has, I believe, five of those lots under contract. He's developing another subdivision at the moment closer to Dahlgren, I believe, and has 80% of those lots sold to Westbrook Homes, which is a regional developer. But, you know, his real experience lies in commercial, commercial development. Darryl has a tremendous amount of experience with commercial. Darrell has a tremendous amount of experience with commercial construction. He's developed, helped with to develop the infrastructure on commercial sites for well-known national retailers all over the country, including some of the logos I've put on my presentation up there. And he just has a tremendous amount of experience with that. And Darrell really is, was the one with the, kind of, I guess, the vision and the ambition to put this project together. The second member of the team, if I could get the next slide, please, is Greg Newville, who's here again with us tonight. Mr. Newville is a longtime friend and peer of Darrell's and they're 50/50 partners on this project. Greg's resume really is very impressive and would take up a lot of time if I, if I started reading the whole thing, but Greg started his career in the 90s developing infrastructure and retail locations for a lot of well-known national brands. His first project, his first major project was actually building out the first 50 stores of Mall of America. And from there, he kind of expanded and has worked with a lot of notable brands, some of which I've listed up there on projects from Virginia to Hawaii and everywhere in between. He's really built quite an impressive career and has a very strong financial background as, I think if you all have a chance to look at the letter from his bank, we'll attest to that, as well as just the fact that he was able to kind of call in to that bank and get that irrevocable letter of credit kind of issued in a relatively short time, we'll attest to that. Next slide, please. The final member of the team is Samer Shalabi, and anybody who's familiar with the kind of Greater Fredericksburg area real estate market will recognize his name. Mr. Shalabi's been hired as a consultant on this project through his company Development Consulting Services. Prior to starting this company, Mr. Shalabi was a, the Director of Engineering and Construction for the Silver Companies. He has a tremendous amount of experience with large-scale real estate residential developments that which would rival anyone in the region. He's developed more than 1,000 lots for his own personal projects and dozens of subdivisions. On the next slide, I've just included a short list of some of his more recent subdivisions in the Fredericksburg, Stafford, and Spotsylvania area. I think there's something over 850 lots or something up there. I went through and counted at one point, but he's the last member of the team. And kind of on the same note, one thing I wanted to point out, which I kind of took for granted because I have a fair amount of experience and just knowledge of how the real estate development industry works is, I just want to make it clear that my clients, you know, are not going to be the ones building the houses. And I think that was something that I took for granted, that maybe not everybody in the public or maybe even on the board appreciated that. My, my client's a developer. They're going to buy the land, get the land entitled, go through the engineering steps to get it done, and then they'll do the things they're good at, which is putting in the infrastructure, putting in streets, grading the lots, and then they'll sell the lots to a national builder like Ryan or Toll or Pulte or, you know, Kay Hovnanian or someone like that, many of whom have already expressed a lot of interest in this project. And so I did just want to make that clear, that it won't be Darrell Hertenstein designing and, you know, out there building the houses that'll, that'll be a part of this project. Next slide, please. So the next, that was our development team. The next thing I want to do is kind of just briefly go over the project. The project's divided up into four land bays. The first is Land Bay A, which is the medical facility. And we have proffered, as Heather went over, there's a proffer that that will be a medical facility and that we, if the deal with Mary Washington doesn't work out for whatever reason, that the applicant has the responsibility to build that medical facility and that's an enforceable proffer by the county. My client will be donating the land and $500,000 to try to incentivize Mary Washington Healthcare, which we think would be an excellent partner and an excellent asset for this region, to take on and inhabit that medical facility. However, again, if they don't for any reason, my client will be there to kind of backstop that. Next slide, please. The commercial parts of the property are Land Bays B and D. These will be zoned C2 commercial. We've proffered that they'll be limited to specific service types and we've excluded certain uses that we felt were repugnant to kind of the development theme and what the county's looking for along that Route 3 and 301 corridor in there. Some of the uses that we've excluded are cemeteries, building supply yards, group care facilities, commercial laundries, motels, commercial garages, and mini storage facilities. And those were excluded after discussion with county staff. Next slide, please. Land Bay C is the residential, is the residential aspect of this project. And you may remember way back more than a year ago now that originally, the original application didn't proffer a unit mix and that's been, that's been fixed over time. It's one of the issues that's been ironed out. The GDP and unit mix are now proffered. There's 150 townhomes, 200 multifamily, and 100 age-restricted units that will be part of this project. And another tremendous benefit of this project is the transportation infrastructure that this project will provide. You can see that my client has agreed to build the inter parcel connector, which will connect Route 3 and Route 301. And that's, I can just say that's an expensive road. We don't know exactly how much, but the initial estimates we've got is that it will be very expensive. You can see there's a strip of our resource protection area kind of right there in the middle and that will have to, the impact on that area will have to be mitigated and offset. However, my client was, realized the importance of this to the county and agreed to do it because it really is going to relieve traffic congestion. It's going to provide another means of ingress and egress from and to, to and from 301 and 3. And it also will be one quarter of that kind of outer loop around the 3 and 301 intersection that's called for in the transportation plan. So that in and of itself is a very big asset for the county. Next slide, please. Next slide. So next, I'd like to talk about how this project fits in with your comprehensive plan. And the first thing I'd like to note is that your comprehensive plan calls for 3,248 new dwelling units being required by the year 2030. 3,248 dwelling units are going to be needed by 2030. That's in the comprehensive plan. And I think that's a very important fact. Obviously, a lot of, a tremendous amount of research and thought went into the comprehensive plan and the plan is saying that, you know, in less than 10 years, this county will have a need for 3,248 new homes, whether you like it or not. And the comp plan also calls for these new dwelling units to be built in primary settlement areas. They want the development, the comp plan wants the development concentrated in primary settlement areas. Specifically, there's a call for higher density housing in the Route 3 and 301 primary settlement area. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, go, go back for me, please. Thank you. And I just point out that, of course, our property is pretty much dead center in the Route 3 and 301 primary settlement area there. If you can see the black arrow, that's generally the location of the property. So this property and this project is exactly where the comp plan calls for high-density development. I'd also note that the comp plan call, next slide, thank you. Here's some quotes I've pulled from the comprehensive plan. The first is, "The intent of this policy is to accommodate population and employment growth in a compact pattern by directing the majority of new development to locate along the major roadways of Route 3 and 301 within the settlement areas." The comp plan goes on to note that "this area is one of the primary locations for future residential development, including the location for potential rezoning to higher-density residential and mixed-use zoning districts. And in areas with public utilities, which our site has, densities of up to eight dwelling units per acre may be permitted." So per the comp plan, up to 741 homes could be built on this property. And we have asked for 450. So I would suggest that we're on the conservative end density-wise, even though, you know, as a new project and one of the first large-scale rezoning projects to come before at the board, it may not seem like that, but per the comprehensive plan, which calls for 741 dwelling units, our 451 dwelling units are somewhat, are, is conservative. Further, our commercial development with the uses, with specific uses proffered out and with the location of those uses along the 3 and 301 sides, that is also similarly in compliance with the comp plan. Next slide. So next, I'd like to talk about some of the impacts of the projects and the benefits of the projects because you could be perfectly in compliance with the comprehensive plan, but if the impacts are too great, then the project just won't work. And that's not the case here. In our case, the fiscal analysis, impact analysis prepared by the Berkeley Group came up with that this project would actually have a positive net revenue of $21,593 once it was fully built out. And that accounts for numerous expenditures that the county may or may not choose to incur over time. So this is an opportunity for this board to provide 450 new dwelling units of the 3,248 that will be required within the next 10 years and to do so with not only no negative fiscal impact on the county, but with a positive fiscal impact on the county, according to the county's own consultants who prepared the report. The report also notes there'll be one-time revenue of, you know, over $9.7 million and goes on to note that developments that proper infrastructure improvements have public benefits that can extend well beyond the project. And I think that speaks to some of the things we're doing for like the inter parcel connector and our agreement with the Service Authority. Next slide. In addition to just the overall net positive impact on the county's fiscal bottom line, my client has also proffered specific cash proffers to offset any one-time impacts that this project may have on county services. The first being, the first one I'll talk about is the schools. My client's proffered $1,000 per non-age-restricted unit, $350,000 to help off-pack impacts on schools. Next slide. My client has also made several proffers to help offset any impacts that this project may have on the fire and rescue services of the county. First, I'll talk about the non-monetary proffers. My client's proffered that any multifamily and age-restricted units will be equipped with fire suppression sprinkler systems. My client's proffered the use of non-combustible materials and coordination of the road design system. And they've, has also agreed to limit the building height to three stories. And while all those things may not seem quite as appealing as a big cash proffer, I would point out that these are extra expenses that will have to be incurred by any ultimate builder of this property and this, this product. And that expense inevitably gets passed down. So these, these, these proffers represent real expenses to my clients and real benefits to the county. In addition to those non-monetary proffers, my client has made a monetary proffer of $500 per unit or $225,000 to help offset any additional impacts. Chief Moody, in a, in a January 2nd, 2020 letter, I think summed up, summed it up nicely when he said, "I believe the applicant has addressed our fire and life safety risk reduction concerns and has a proposed means of helping to reduce the fiscal impact with providing our services." Next slide, please. The latest proffer, which Heather was kind enough to go over, was to law enforcement and public safety. That's $1,000 per door, regardless of age restriction or not, for a total of $450,000, which is proffered, proffered to offset the project's impact on law enforcement and public safety costs. That was important for my client, I think, especially after hearing some of the comments at the last Planning Commission meeting, specifically with regard to the CIP presentation and, you know, some of the challenges law enforcement in this community were facing. And he was happy to, my client was happy to make this proffer. Next slide, please. Finally, the proffer that we're most proud of, I think, or that we think might be most beneficial to the county deals with our agreement with the Service Authority, which has been incorporated into the proffers we provided. As everyone knows, there's a major overhaul at the Perkins Corner wastewater treatment plant that's going to be required in the very near future. There are only 205 equivalent residential connections remain. And that's going to be, something needs to be done there and it needs to be done very quickly. This project will generate over $9 million in tap fees when it's fully built out for the Service Authority. In addition, the agreement my client has entered with the Service Authority has, will provide much-needed cash flow to the project with $3 million worth of tap fees being paid over an approximate three and a half year period. The first $250,000 will be paid within 90 days of approval. And this was all coordinated closely with the Service Authority to try to help them with their cash flow needs as the engineering bills would come due and other things like that would be coming due. The next $500,000 would be due within 90 days of site plan approval. And then there'd be $750,000 annual payments thereafter on the anniversary date of the $500,000 payment, which would be paid until the $3 million mark was reached. And it's important to note that of the last $750,000 payment, $500,000 worth of ERCs that are, that are being purchased would be only, would be able to be used by my client for the commercial aspect of the property. We thought that would show good faith, not that my client really needs any extra incentive to build out or sell the commercial aspect of the property, but just some extra incentive that he's serious about getting that, that property sold and that property developed and not just build the residential side and kind of leave, kind of leave the commercial unbuilt. Finally, as Heather noted, a recent, a recent addition to our application is that this agreement has been secured by an irrevocable letter of credit that Mr. Newville was able to obtain from his, from his bank, and that's been provided to y'all for your review. Next slide. Finally, I'll talk about the Mary Washington Healthcare Facility. And we have Vice President of Mary Washington, Eric Fletcher, here to discuss this or to answer any questions the board may have. If you do have questions for him, I'd invite you to, and encourage you to, please ask, please ask him. He can talk in more detail about this. But according to a 2019 report prepared by Mary Washington Hospital, there are two primary care providers and one urgent care facility in King George County. Next slide. This places King George County in the worst quartile among counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Next slide. The leaders of the county realize this deficit and, you know, in their, in the comprehensive plan have called out that a major goal for community services and facilities within the county would be to advocate for the availability of medical services to meet the needs of all county residents. Next slide, please. So that brings us to the proffer for Mary Washington Healthcare. That's the donation of the 8.45 acre site. It's proffered as a medical facility. It cannot be used for anything else without, you know, coming back here and getting the board's permission to amend the proffers or something like that. We have a land transfer agreement in place that, where the applicant has agreed to donate the 8.45 acre parcel and an additional $500,000 to incentivize Mary Washington to build the facility there. If Mary Washington doesn't build for any reason, the new proffers provide that the applicant will be obligated to build that facility. In short, a medical facility will be built and if it isn't for some reason, the county will have recourse. And that's something we worked closely with the new county attorney on to make sure that this agreement had teeth for the county and that the county was covered. It also addressed Mr. Granger's concern from the August meeting. Next slide, please. So in summary, we feel our project is, is a good project. It's in perfect alignment with the comprehensive plan. It's right in the 3 and 301 corridor, which is where the dense growth that the county's going to need to meet that 3,248, you know, dwelling unit number is called for. And you're, you're able to provide these houses at what's, you know, estimated to be a revenue surplus for the county. We've also tried to address the one-time impacts that the county might feel as a result of this project with $350,000 going to schools, $225,000 going to the fire and rescue, in addition to the non-monetary proffers, and $450,000 to law enforcement. It also provides the critical support to the Service Authority at a time when the Service Authority really needs it. With the upcoming major expenditures for the Perkins Corner wastewater treatment plant, this project will produce over $9 million in tap fees over its life and we, my client is personally going to be paying $3 million in upfront payments to help with the cash flow crunch that the Service Authority is facing. In addition, we're incentivizing Mary Washington Hospital to come and open that medical facility by the $500,000 cash donate, $500,000 cash donation and the donation of the 8.45 acres of what will be commercial land. And in addition, my clients agreed to backstop that agreement in the event that Mary Washington doesn't build for any doesn't build for any reason. Next slide, please. So last thing I'd like to leave you with is just a couple of what I consider important numbers. The first is that 3,248 number again. Again, that's your comprehensive plan is calling for 3,248 new dwell, you know, the requirement for 3,248 new dwelling units by 2030. Those are houses that are going to be needed whether, you know, the residents and whether the leadership like it or not, that's, it's going to grow. And this is an opportunity to provide 450, 450 of those houses with a $21,593 net benefit to the county's financial bottom line. In addition, my clients proffered now over $1 million, $1,250,000 to offset one-time impacts, $450,000 to the law enforcement, $225,000 to fire and rescue, and $350,000 to schools. And again, the $3 million in upfront payments that my client will make to address the cash flow issues currently being faced by the, by the service authority. So with those numbers and that in mind, I think the board should ask itself, if not this project, if not this project that complies perfectly with the comprehensive plan, then what project is going to work? And I think the answer is if this project doesn't work in this area with these proffers, then I don't, I'm not sure any project would work. And so we'd ask you to vote for approval tonight and appreciate your time and your consideration and your, all the work you do on behalf of the county for the residents and everything like that. So again, I've got Mr. Fletcher from Mary Washington, if anybody would like to speak to him. We've got Mr. Ferrugie, the engineer, if anybody has any technical questions that I can't answer. And happy to, happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Well, I think so we can get our public comment. We'll have Mr. Davis, we'll bring you back up and Miss Hall and then gentleman from, what was his name again? I apologize.
Eric Fletcher.
Eric Fletcher. Sorry about that. Bring him up also after we get public comment. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Right now, I know we did not have a list, so I will ask everybody to be respectful, to let people come up to the microphone and then exit with proper social distancing so that, so I will try to be very orderly. It is, we'll be limited to three minutes. Mr. Bush has the timer here. One thing I will do to allow for that flow for people back and forth to the mic with social distancing, we have had numerous constituents email us or provide written documentation and some have asked to be read and some have asked just to enter it into the record. So those that we will try to go through and the ones that asked us to read it, read them in a timely manner. And I will ask my colleagues first for theirs. And then I will read the ones that were sent to all of us or just to me directly, trying to capture all of them. But all of them have been sent to our Board Secretary to, to enter in the public record and she's category, putting them all together and putting them with the minutes. But with that being said, when somebody comes up to the podium while they're exiting, another one comes, I will read one of the comments or my colleagues will read one of the comments just to, so we can get everybody under and we'll, we'll see how this goes and if we might have to cut off public comment after a reasonable amount of time. So with that being said, who would like to be the first person to come? Go ahead and please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Anna Maria Lobor. I live in Presidential Lakes. Well, this is my second time that I hear about this. They offer wonderful things that come into King George. I live in King George 47 or 48 years. And I noticed the traffic is terrible in 3, Route 3, 205, 206, and 301. When I want to go to Maryland, 3 o'clock, I cannot go to Maryland because the traffic is terrible, especially now that we don't have, with this pandemic, we don't have too much traffic, the people go to the base. Well, it's not, it's not as bad as it is. But when next year the traffic, they come back to normal, that will be terrible. Also, you're putting more strain to the police department, to the school system, to the water department. I think I read somewhere where they offered, gentlemen, they offered $3 million to the water department. Because the water department has been in trouble for many, many years and I can prove it. And for that reason, and you, all of you moving here not too long ago, I remember, you moving here for be peaceful, for the county is nice. And you don't want to, when the county is too crowded, too many people, it's not good for the people, for the children you raising here. This county has been rural and I want it to be rural. And I don't want these things. I don't want any solar. I'm happy with my electricity. I'm happy with everything in King George. If I don't have something, I go to Fredericksburg. I don't have no problem. Thank you. And I don't want it, you, please protect the county.
Thank you. I will read the first letter as somebody else comes up to the podium. Good evening, board. I am currently on the phone waiting for the public hearing for the villages project and I am scheduled to be work at 4:00 AM. So I'm afraid I will not be able to stay on for the public comment portion. She had submitted this letter at least two hours ago. I wouldn't want to express that I support this project and ask that you please approve this project. My address is 10231 Roosevelt Drive, King George, Virginia. Thank you, Carrie Toman. And if I pronounce that name wrong, I apologize. Yes, sir? You're up.
Thank you. I'm Rick Wilks, live 9269 Whitetail Way, King George. It's off Millbank. I use Gil Road and Mount Rose Road to access most of the county. This would add a tremendous amount of congestion and difficulty to that access. I retired from the Marine Corps and bought property down here about 30 years ago. I came here because of rural nature. I left Northern Virginia. I don't want to see King George turn into another Fairfax. Additionally, they talk about the medical facility. Mary Washington, as I understand it, will not build an ER. They're talking about another urgent care. We currently have two urgent cares in the county. We have another one under construction. So I do not think that the medical facility, which is being so touted, is really that big of a deal. The other and final thing is, we, when we moved out here, tried to leave the congestion. My area of the county, it was zoned rural agriculture. Now, we have hop yard. Now you're trying to give us the villages. That is not rural agriculture. You're going from a property that would have had maybe 50 homes on it to 450. Significant difference. My wife is a retired school teacher from this county. She can speak very well to the crowded nature of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll read the next letter. Mr. Stonehill, I'll, I'll pick you for the next reading of the letter. So I know you have one. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I send this letter in my absence as a current resident of the beautiful county of King George, Virginia. I would like to say that I have read this proposal in its entirety and am in full favor and support of this rezoning. In regards to Mary Washington Health Hospital, I would be very happy to have a larger urgent care facility closer to my family for emergencies. Currently, we have to travel to Fredericksburg for emergency services. Having two young children and a significant other, I would feel much better knowing emergency care is that much closer to the ones I love. I see this as nothing but an improvement and major benefit in our community. Closer help for emergencies can save lives and I strongly support this part of the proposal for those reasons. In regards to the housing development for age-restricted and non-age-restricted, I've thoroughly reviewed the impact form from BDOT and the environmental impact reports regarding the building, build of this project. I would like to say that I moved to this county because of its rural beauty and definitely do not want to see it ruined with overdevelopment and overcrowding. I feel that the increased growth and traffic impact on the county will be very minimal since the project is phased out over 10 years. And I'm in support of the additional housing development for seniors and non-seniors. I believe this project will greatly improve and benefit our community as a whole. Some of those major benefits are annual monetary donations to the water plant, fire and rescue squads, and to the schools which my kids will attend. I am in full support of this project and strongly urge all of the members of our county board to vote yes in favor of the rezoning. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Christopher Lane, resident of Monmouth Village, King George, Virginia.
Good evening. Michael Hayes, 18051 Stony Point Road, King George, Virginia. Before I go through some of the aspects of tonight's public hearing, I'd be like to go ahead and, and make a confession tonight that I was the one that called in and requested that Kanye West added to the ballot. So I just wanted to get that out there in case you guys were wondering. All right. But on a serious note, so I know I've met with each of you individually, one-on-one. I want to thank you for taking the time to sit down with me and help me understand the many facets of this project. And before I go into my public comments, I, I need clarification on a couple of things because I've gotten conflicting answers from some of you. So for tonight, on the Berkeley Group fiscal impact analysis, who paid for that?
Sir, we can't answer questions during this. If you just.
Can't answer questions whatsoever.
Nope, just, it's public comment.
Very good. All right, we'll move right on. So the three questions I asked for, for you, is King George better off with this approval of this project as proposed? I know we got some last minute changes here tonight in the last 24 hours. That's, that's, that's good, that we haven't had a chance to review and I know that you haven't either. Will this county, project help the county's budget and the taxpayers of being additional burden? I know the budget was a big conversation piece for tonight. And is the best deal that we can make for all parties involved? So it really, is it this perfect project that is being touted here this evening? So, you know, when I met with you individually, I went through what I thought were the deficiencies in the Berkeley Group fiscal impact report, right? And I went through those with you in person and what I've provided to you in those packets is the black and white of where I think those errors are. I emailed you those this weekend, so that you have a chance to review them. I've added a couple of other documents to those that I'm also going to touch on tonight. So let's just talk about some of those numbers that we've been going over right here. So we've talked about, first and foremost, a net revenue estimate of $21,593. That's, you know, less than 1% of the overall revenue that's projected to come out of this project, which is $2,937 million. So you can see there's very small room for error to say that this project is net positive for the county. Okay? And then if it is not net positive, then that means the taxpayers have to make up the difference and pay for that. So the residential real estate taxes estimated to be 927 in revenue, calculated using a price of $294,300 per unit. Now, of all these meetings, we've been going back and forth over the last two and a half years, we've heard about affordable housing, affordable housing. Planning Commission, people spoke up, we need this for the affordable housing. Talking about the comprehensive plan, affordable housing is in the comprehensive plan. This doesn't address that. There's nothing in here that says that we're going to get affordable housing.
I'm sorry, your time is up. You're at your three minutes.
Can I donate one more minute, Mr. gentleman?
State your name.
Hold on one second. Mr. Britton, is that allowed?
That's entirely up to you, ma'am, I'm sure.
Hold on a second. I will allow that, but you need to come up and state your name and, and you will give up your time to Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Howard Thomas. I'm at 14354 Round Hill Road. I oppose this project and I donate the remainder of my time to Mr. Hayes.
Go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. So where is the affordable housing in this project that's proposed and advertised since day one? And that's in the second to last page in your packets where that's been advertised to the public and has been completely misleading from the beginning over the last two and a half years. So if there is affordable housing that is proposed, wouldn't that be less tax revenue? Therefore, the project would not be tax positive to the county if we have lower cost in the residential houses. So that, I think there is one error in the fiscal impact report. And again, I already talked about affordable housing part of economic plan. Estimated number of new residents is 1,160. County data shows that we have 2.8 residents per household. Wouldn't a high-density development like this have more residents? Why are we using county data to calculate what a project like this would have as far as the number of residents? Well, we don't have anything really like this in the county that we're showing, if we're showing a newer number of residents, then then we're showing a lower impact on county resources. Schools, fire rescue, sheriff, et cetera. Okay? The fiscal impact, well, let's go back to the schools for a second because I know a lot of people here spouses or teachers in the, in the schools. We're talking about Dr. Benson estimated in August of 2019, 210 students from this project, not the 135 that's being proposed in the fiscal impact report. Okay? So that's 75 more students. And we also projected needing three more school buses, which we talked about today was what, $312,000? We need three more bus drivers and salary and benefits, which is another $60,000. So we're saying that the school, just the school impact could be off by $650,000 a year. And we get a one-time proffer of $350,000. Okay? Public safety, we've already talked a little bit about that, fire and rescue, law enforcement, social services, all those are going to be impacted by that. We've got the service authority. So let's talk about that for a few minutes. In the fiscal impact report, it shows the service authority is operating at a loss. A loss of, what did it come up to? $132,000 in the fiscal impact report. Okay? The, the revenue from the, the service authority is 852,000, but the expenses are $984,000. So I don't understand how these proffers and things are really helping the service authority when it's already operating at a loss in this report. So how is that helping keeping the rates and things down in that report? There is really no proffer, it's only connection fees, their prepayment of connection fees. What that means is the developer gets to lock in a price, gives that money upfront.
Sir, your three minutes is up. Would somebody just like to state your name and?
Paul Deltridge, 14760, East 3 Lane, my guess, remainder of my time.
Please try to speed it up, though.
I am trying, ma'am. I'm trying to talk as fast as I can. So we talked about the service authority, yeah, prepayment of the tap fees, sorry. So the $3 million, the developer gets that back when he sells the lots, right? That is not money that's going to reduce the actual cost and price of the service authority, which the new facility is estimated to be between 10 and 15 million dollars. The estimate to decommission the current facility is nine and a half to 11.4. So we got $26.4 million connection fees of $9 million, minimum shortfall of $10 million. Right? But that money that's going to be for those prepaid connection fees is not a proffer. That's basically a loan that that developer would get back, locking in those rates. If you guys raise rates in the future, he's going to turn around and sell those lots with those connection fees at a higher price and make another profit.
Is that the end of your statement? Because this is the last one I'm giving you, so.
Last one I'm giving, what?
Well, when your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Just so other people can speak.
Sure. So I'll cut to the chase on a couple of things on all of that. We already talked about the Mary Wash. You know, the land transfer agreement came out after no, no contract was made. Mr. Davis talked about this at the planning commission meeting and we talked about back and forth at the planning commission meeting that, you know, Mr. Hearnstein is just a blue collar guy. Now we get a presentation that he's an expert, does all kinds of construction, all kinds of building. So they're really grasping at straws to trying to get the approval after the planning commission had a tie vote. And I would argue that the planning commission didn't even have a tie vote. It's five to four. So is it Joseph DeCarthay, right? Decordon, right? He's the planning commission? Decordon. When you took the vote, not blaming you Heather here at all, took the vote, he abstained in February of this year not to vote on the project. Then when they took the vote in this last planning commission meeting, he watched and waited for the count. And then after she took the count, he raised his hand after she counted and asked for his vote to be counted. That is suspect. So it really wasn't approved. So at the end of the day, I'm done in 30 seconds.
Go ahead.
At the end of the day, we have got to do what we think's best for the county. And, you know, you've got to look at this project as a whole, not by a medical facility, not by affordable housing, not by the service authority. Is this the best deal we can get in this, in this arrangement? I don't think it's perfect, right? I think more money needs to go in the county. A million dollars is what the county gets out of a $151 million project? That's not a lot. The last thing I'm going to talk about is two things.
Your, your time is up. I'm sorry. I think we've given you a lot of time. I would love to have somebody else come up and speak. Thank you very much, though. I have read your, your document and I think all of us have. Mr. Stonehill, would you like to read the, your constituent?
I think you read him. Chris Lane.
Was that the one? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I will read the next one. I'll try to be brief on this one. "I write that the plans for the proposed Villages subdivision rezoning application case be disapproved because they do not represent growth that is good or planned for our county. Instead, this is a planned development by developer. It is a plan to profit the developer. It does not address the needs of our community. This project would change King George from a rural community, an environment that is supported and enjoyed by 85% of the county's residents, according to the results of the Planning Commission's opinion poll, into a suburban dormitory. Further, the county's school system could not accommodate the numbers of children projected for this number of houses. Can we afford to build new schools at the cost of what else? The fire department, law enforcement, service authority, and transport system all are already burdened to near their limits. This additional suburban dormitory for DC would have a negative effect on the safety and quality of life for the current residents of the county. There is no way it would pay for itself in taxes in the long run, and it would cause additional congestion in the schools and on the roads. How long do you have to wait at the stoplight at Route 3 and Route 301 now? What do you think that wait will be like if you add all these houses and people? Furthermore, approval of this application would signal that zoning in King George is a joke. Come and get it. The county is now open for suburban sprawl. I urge you to reject rezoning application case number 1903Z02. Sincerely, Gail Williams, Works Millbank Farm, 15615 Millbank Road, King George, and Longfield Farm, 15070 Chastain Drive, King George, Virginia, 22485." Mr. Granger, I'm going to come to you next. Would somebody else like to come to the podium, please?
Eric O'Neil, live 9471 Lothian Road. Sorry, I don't have a team of people that are going to give me some more time, so I'll try to cover what I need to real quick. First of all, I just noticed that Mr. Hayes referenced 210 students. That was based on all single housing, not the structure that's actually being proposed, so a lot of his data is off. Obviously, I'm a supporter of rezoning for this project. There are several reasons why. I'm only going to cover a few of them tonight. First of all, the alignment of this project with the strategic plan is important, and the Villages Project supports many of the end-state goals. With the mission and vision of preparing for the future growth, I believe the Villages Project presented by Mr. Hertenstein supports these goals and much more. Second, the proffers provided are not insignificant as others make them seem. The school proffer at $350,000, fire and rescue proffer of $225,000, and then, of course, we just found out about the law enforcement proffer of $450,000, I believe it was. I mean, these all seem to address concerns brought up by the administrators to mitigate the impact. Even the land transfer and the $500,000 incentive to build the medical facility should not be discounted. Also, the advance payment on the connection fees totaling $3 million, they are significant in pushing up the -- or plushing up the service authority budget toward the necessary Perkins Corner situation. While there's more required to fund that solution for Perkins Corner, it's a solution that must be resolved, whether this rezoning gets approved or not, or do we just want to raise taxes because that's your alternative? People are already paying high water and sewer bills. I don't think we want to go there. With these proffers, advances, and incentives offers, the true impact of these dollars need to be looked at and more, just in simply bottom-line numbers. The future value of those dollars lowers purchasing power to the county and the service of the --